There we go.
Welcome back.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, do we have Jeff here?
Yes.
Oh, there you go.
All right.
Okay, we got thirty seconds and we'll start. Okay, everybody ready? I'd like to call the Albert Plaza Commission Regular Meeting dated October third, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to COVID nineteen pandemic pandemic. Missions and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to albertcity.org/virtualmeeting. At that time, click on the two, one of the two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak at the, on a particular item. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must raise, must be present at the meeting. If, if instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click on the raise your hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen when the public hearing or the item is open. The speaker may accept up to five minutes. One minute for each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, would you please show the slide? Is Alex here today?
I believe so. I saw him a short time ago.
There we go.
There it is.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Wetton?
Here.
Vice Chairman Mazza?
Here.
And Chair Smith will be absent this evening. And you have a quorum.
Okay, may I have approval of agenda, of the agenda motion? Craig?
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about five C. I don't know if we need to continue it. There's comment that there's a PVD in process and it says staff will assess the proposed height, whether it impedes any views, blah, blah, blah. If protected views are being impacted, then staff may propose an alternative recommendation. I don't know if that, if that means that we need to hold it or, or, or whether we go ahead, I don't know.
Sorry, Commissioner, we, we went to the site. The reason that that was in the staff report is because we were not able to conduct the PVD before the agenda was published. And so we did conduct the PVD and it was determined that no impact to the PVD will result from the proposed development.
Okay, so that determination has been made. We can go ahead. We don't have that hanging over our heads. Okay, thank you.
There, if I may, there is another issue that was raised by the neighbor and that has to do with the appropriate interpretation of the neighborhood standards.
All right.
Formula. The issue being whether you have to separately address size of the structure under the neighborhood standards or whether you also have to address development, which is not specifically defined in in, in either the municipal code or the LIP. But I, I take it the argument is that what they mean by development is the development area. That is, we say in formula we use for total development square footage. The staff report, as I read it, only addresses building size and doesn't address whether the total development square footage is, is also qualified under, under their neighborhood standards. So it, it's an issue for me. I, I'd like to have staff's input on it. I know it's not something that has come up earlier. It just came up in the, in the letter from the, from the neighbor. And so that's just one more element to throw in.
Well, let me, let me ask. Patrick, is this something we can continue at this time or do we keep it on the agenda? Staff has recommended, and I guess somebody's making a motion, but I'm making a motion. I mean, I'm making a motion to approve the agenda with item four C. Continue to a date uncertain and item five A continue to a date uncertain. Would anybody like to add five C?
Yeah, I, I guess it's a question of process. I think Jeff raises a good issue and it's just a question of whether that gets in an automatic continuance now or whether that's something for us to debate about what is the interpretation of the blah, 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 and then, and then decide or not that it needs to be continued.
Well, as I understand it, Patrick, you check in. We can make a motion to continue anything at this point. But we can't debate.
Yeah.
Issues under that point. So if somebody makes a motion to continue, I will amend my motion to continue five C to a date uncertain if somebody wants to add that.
The only thing I would suggest is that maybe a date uncertain. I think that that requires reposting of the notice and the re mailing and all the rest of that stuff. Maybe, maybe they can just, maybe you can just give us a date certain.
If, if I may jump in there, one thing too, sorry, not to distract, but on four B, we just recently learned and Jessica, are you on, is you on there? Are they available to speak if needed? But it sounds like one of the members of the project team, their geology, their geotech consultant apparently had to go in for emergency surgery. So on four B, they were requesting a continuance. And then to get back to the item of Broad Beach and Pat, please stop me if I go too far into this. And Tyler can explain, but I believe that in looking at staff report, the neighborhood standards was used for the purposes of the home size, the TDSF. And we can get, and then once again, I don't want to get into the path and understand here. I don't want to get too much down the line on this. But if we do continue it, it would be helpful. We can do it to a date certain. If we could just get some direction from the commission of what would make that more clear. Because Tyler, am I correct in saying that? Because when I look at the table, I see TDSF.
That's right.
Not necessarily a development area because as Commissioner Jennings points out, what you can use neighborhood standards for is very specific in the, in both the LCP, the LIP and the MMC.
Well, I would, I would suggest if there's a question, we continue it. We have a very full calendar tonight. But again, I, if somebody could make a motion, we can discuss the motion or second it. Richard, are you saying four B should be continued and do you have a date for that?
Jessica, did they provide, should we, what they need?
They didn't provide a backup date. I think Mr. Allen, the architect, should be in the meeting. Should be able to raise his hand, but I would say to the next meeting, a date certain.
I, I see him now, Jessica. Dan Allen, Rebecca, there we go.
Is he unblocked?
Hi, this is, this is Dan Allen. Yes, I just, I just learned our project geologist, Don Kavaloski, had eye surgery today and he had forgotten about the meeting and wasn't, isn't prepared. And my understanding is that the, he will recover pretty quickly. So then we'd like to get on the next available meeting, possible.
So that would be October seventeenth.
Okay, and then would that be the same for five C? Is there a date available for five C on October seventeenth?
We could place it there or if there are edits need to be made, Tyler, probably better to do the first of November. The first meeting in November, not the first, not the day number one, but the first meeting in November, since these reports have to be published this week.
Okay, so what, what is that date?
November seventh would be the first meeting in November. Tyler, is that your preference or?
I think I'm okay with that. I'm just, I'm a little still confused. So we just need to add clarification about whether this is for development area or structure size. Is that?
And can I, can I interject here, John? Without getting into the substance of this now, there, I could quote you a line from the LIP about, about this code. And there are some questions about what you'd need to look at that we either need to debate tonight or if we want to just continue it straight away, we would at least need to have conversations with staff in the interim about what they need to look at.
Which can be done. So I'm going to make a motion, if nobody else is, continue item four B to October seventeenth, four C to a date uncertain, five A to a date uncertain, and five C to November seventh. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Craig, your hands up. You want to say anything? Okay, can we call the roll?
Can I, before you do that, John?
Yes.
Richard has asked for a little bit of guidance and Tyler as well. Here's the, here's the problem of, of the way I see it. The question is whether when you go through the neighborhood standards application, you need to compare basically total development square footage of all the, the affected properties in the area. And then at this, in, in addition to that, to look at structure size of the properties in the area. The total developments where footage has a more of a FAR kind of flavor to it. And that, that was the issue that was raised by the neighbor. As I look at the staff report, I can't see that those two were dealt with separately and, and maybe they shouldn't be. I'm just asking for, for some guidance on that.
Okay, and Craig, your comments?
Yeah, okay, one line from the code then. For purposes of this section, neighborhood standards means the average structure size and/or development setback or height of at least eighty percent, blah, 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 blah. So there are a couple of factors there. And it opens it up to discussion about how you weight those or what the ors mean or the commas. And the, the language is a little fuzzy there. So here we discuss it tonight.
Yeah.
Let's not go too far. The other thing I would suggest you look into is I noticed a huge variance in lot sizes. So you have to decide whether it's the same, but also, but we didn't go farther. We can make further comments to Tyler.
This is Mark Wetton. He's frozen out of the meeting. Can you help him?
Yeah, hold on a second.
Can you? Say, yeah, did we, did we lose Mr. Commissioner Wetton?
I've got Mark on the phone. He's frozen out of the meeting. What is that? You can't get in or out?
Alex, I'm going to send you Mark's phone number.
You know what? Alex will call you in just a flash and he'll walk you through it. Okay? Okay, he's locked out. Alex is going to call him and trying to get him back in. But I don't think we have four out of five. I think we're going to pass the, the agenda motion.
Correct, yeah.
It says no.
No, correct. We, we, we have a quorum. You, you guys, once again, it's up to the chair's discretion. If you want to give a few minutes to let Commissioner Wetton in. If not, you're more than willing to, to proceed with the approval of.
Proceed. So can we call the roll?
Yes. Vice Chairman Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So we approve the agenda. No ceremonial presentations. So we are often written in oral communication. So we are often written in oral communication with the public. Do we have any?
We did not have anyone who had, oops. Okay, I'm muted, sorry. We did not have anyone who had signed up in advance of the meeting. I'm going to refresh my screen in case anyone has done so in the last minute.
It looks like you.
If anyone is present in the meeting and wishes to speak on an item not a jet on the planning commission's agenda for this evening, but on then the planning commission's purview, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
And Rebecca, we seem to have one.
Yes, we have Brock.
I think he's the owner on five C, correct?
I'm not certain, but.
Well, five C is no longer on the agenda, so he may speak. Can you unmute him? Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak on this item. I would like to add one more particular issue with this property. We've been waiting for a long time to get this on the agenda. And one of the big issues is a slope failure that's been happening. We've been trying to get the, the city's approval for emergency repair. At that time, I'm not quite sure why it didn't go through. We were hoping to get this on the agenda because we are unable to repair the slope without demolishing the home. And the only, one of the only reasons we decided to build a new home is because I would, I would actually wanted to demolish this home. I really love it. But the only reason is we are in danger of this home being unstable. And we were hoping to get this done before the rains are coming and the slope failure is significant. And we are now standing, you know, to wait another month until we are able to get any sort of guidance on what to do. So that's what I wanted to ask, if there's any way to get this back on the, on a meeting agenda, if not today, for an earlier date.
Well, just right offhand, emergency permits are not granted by us.
So I know, I know.
So we can't act on that. So I think we're in the situation we're in, because we're not going to be able to hear something without all correct information. It'll just end up getting continued again. So I'm sorry about that, but.
It's been, we have this for a long time, been trying to get this on the, on the board for many years. And it's just waiting and waiting and waiting. I mean, I know Tyler is aware of it.
Okay, well, I would.
I'm back, sorry.
Okay, are there any other comments?
What did I miss?
Mark, what happened while you were gone is we approved the agenda, including continuing five C to November.
So it's, we're continuing four C and five C?
We're continuing four B to October seventeenth, four C, date uncertain, five A to a date uncertain, and five C to November seventh.
Okay, so what's left then?
We'll find out.
Okay.
Finder tonight. Okay, Commissioner, are there any more speakers? Please raise your hand.
And seeing none.
Okay, we're now off to Commissioner comments. Craig.
Yeah, quick, two quick things. We were told in the last meeting that screen sharing is not possible in the meeting, that one must email a presentation. I don't understand why. It seems like screen sharing is done in a lot of zones and that seems like it should be an option. Number two, I received a complaint about the college doing a lot of watering on the landscaping, putting down sod and doing a lot of watering precisely when people were not allowed to be watering here at all. And I, unfortunately, I haven't had the time to do the research and figure out exactly what's going on there, but it sounds to me it's more a question of landscaping and that they're putting in a big lawn. And I don't know whether that's allowable under the current code or whether there's some exception for an institution like a school to put in a big lawn. So I just wanted to double check on behalf of the person who called me whether their landscaping is indeed appropriate.
Okay, I just want to comment on that, Craig. I believe, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, that Pepperdine is on the Los Virginous water system. I know they, they have a pipeline to their Los Virginous plant. And if they're on Los Virginous, they follow different rules than District twenty nine, which is the one that issued the restrictions on watering for Malibu. So that may be the difference, or it may be that it's Pepperdine and they do what they want. But Pepperdine is not part of the city of Malibu.
No, that's, I'm sorry, this was the, the Santa Monica College installation at Civic Center.
Well, there come. That's, that's an issue I would, the person take up with the, with District twenty nine.
I'll be glad, and you, we, we've been out. We've been looking at the trailer lately, as I'm sure you're all aware, that's been a subject of interest for the farmer's market. So I will see if we can get a glimpse of what they have there, because last, when I was out at the site last, they had a green fence up and blocking what they're doing there because of repaving of the parking lot. But I'll try to see what they have for a lawn and follow up with our ESD folks to see if our landscape ordinance of and on the other question too, is we have not yet conducted a final inspection yet. But I, I feel confident and I haven't looked, so I say this with that caveat. But I would imagine that their landscape plans were looked at for conformance with the city's landscape water ordinance. So the question is also, are they in conformance with those plans? So we can definitely take a peek at what they're doing out there, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, thanks.
Richard, I just want to comment that I had three calls about the college removing the sidewalk this weekend and people had to walk down the middle street for the farmer's market with their little carts and everything. So you may want to check that also. Any other commissioner comments? Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I'd like to request that Richard, not at this meeting, but at some future meeting when we're prepared to do so. Give us the rundown on the whole Malibu Film Society temporary use permit business. I, I questioned about it, a couple of people, and then it showed up on Hans' news feed the other day. So if you could just give us a little rundown of the, the particular sections involved and how the staff is interpreting.
Jeff, there's a ZO races meeting, I believe, this Thursday or next Thursday on a very subject, and there should be a staff report out on it.
So you, I'm looking at the date right now. There will be a ZO races meeting. I was actually going to announce that. I want to say that Commissioner Mazza is correct, that Vice Chair, it is next week on the twelfth.
Yes.
We turned in our staff report today, so I'm sure Mary will publish it shortly, but we'll be talking about TUPs. And the requirements for a TUP, but I, and I know at the last meeting, the, the folks from the Film Society did attend that as well, and they spoke under public comment. So we have that meeting coming up, but nevertheless, if it's the commission's pleasure, we would be glad to provide an update with why they are where they, where things are today. Not a problem.
Okay. I just, my only comment is and I've been so busy, I don't know whether it's already happened or not, but there was a, some kind of planning meeting scheduled to be held at Pepperdine by some other group other than the city of Malibu. It was either last weekend or this coming weekend.
I think it's Thursday, Thursday this week, Thursday this week.
I just want to make sure the public knew that this is not part of the planning department or the city of Malibu putting this on. So you can go in and listen, but you're not listening to the powers that be in the city. And that's about it. Anybody know other comments? Okay.
If I may.
Oh, I'm sorry. Against the law.
I'll try to make it quick. Parker, if I may have the slides, I emailed you. If I may have the next slide, please. So one of the things I want to, I, I want to do with the commission, and I apologize that this keeps getting sidetracked just because we have so much stuff going on, is I want to keep you guys in the loop with things that are we're doing and changes, upcoming things. As you know, at the budget, there were some pretty major changes to the funding in the department, as well as how we were talking about restructuring the department, changing positions around, trying to make some changes here. So I wanted to report back to this commission so that you were aware of some of the things that were changing. So next, at our next meeting, we'll have Patricia Salazar available, our manager of operations, to go into a little bit more detail. But one of the, I would say probably a bigger change is how you submit applications to the department. So we still do in-person submittals. And we're trying to encourage folks when something is time sensitive, so appeals, SCPs, temporary use permits, those types of things, definitely come to City Hall, meet us at the counter and submit. But for other applications, like minor applications, so things for, say, our dark skies ordinance that will be soon having the implementation requirement for commercial and residential. Folks will have the opportunity to submit plant, applications like that, solar permits, time extensions, over the counter applications. They can do that in person or online. And I'm sorry, I'm trying to go through this quick, so I don't make tonight long, so please feel free to stop me and ask questions. And then larger projects like new houses, additions to homes, new septic systems. We're now trying to switch that to all online, the submittal application. So we created a submittal portal on the department's website. And once again, Patricia will be available to explain a bit more for interested folks. But the idea is that now you can email us with, or tell us what you want to do. We'll prepare all your submittal materials, make sure you know all the requirements, get all the fees together and send that back to you digitally. So we're trying to do our best to help be a little more customer friendly and not require folks to come to City Hall and then go to all the different departments. We're, we're trying to make this a bit easier submittal process. If I may have the next slide, please. So some of, as I mentioned, with the improvements, there's the submittal checklist. We're trying, like I said, it's moved to an online system for people. Trying to really help them, so they're not having to go to everybody's counter hours, because that was one of the complaints we heard from folks coming to City Hall. Trying to meet with those counter folks in their allotted time and days of the week. The other item that we've started is an express plan review for tenant improvements. And that is something that our building official put together and a planner does attend these. And what it is, it's by appointment only and it's for interior remodels of tenant spaces. So if somebody, you know, a clothing store like Banana Republic, they should close up shop. And now there's a smaller, you know, local venue, you know, someone who wants to just come in there, open up their clothing store, no changes to the size of the retail space, literally just, I want to come in there and paint the walls a different color and put some shelves up in these areas. We're, so those quick, smaller projects don't get lost in the shuffle of the more major stuff where people are doing actual construction. An appointment can be made with the building department and they can come in on Wednesday afternoons for a plant check over the counter with the building official. If I may have my next slide, please. And then, once again, some other changes. We, now that we are reopening City Hall a bit more and the COVID restrictions are relaxing, we are having Tuesdays and Thursdays, our member from the fire rebuild team available at a little half circular desk there that's just off to the side and outside of the planning counter. And that person will be there for fire victims or anyone working with a fire related project. So once again, just trying to make it access a bit easier. Once again, with submittals, we have a step-by-step submittal guide trying to make the process a little less elusive and more easily accessed. And we're also looking at implementing a policy where we're trying to implement review cycles. And Patricia can explain this a bit more, but we are looking at receiving or purchasing new software for development tracking. And as part of that, we're looking at trying to really coordinate when something comes in, all the submittals from the different departments so that they come all together in one neat package to the applicant. And then the applicant submits a holistic response, so they're addressing the planning departments, questions, building and, or building and safety, public works, trying to get folks to not turn in pieces of a response, but whole responses, because the idea here is, one, I want to have better tracking of how much time is spent by the planners on projects. And also, if we could look at everything at once and not just get a project, look at it and say, okay, well, I have to wait now for the geologist to opine. I'd like to, we're trying to get all that to happen at the same time, so that if someone says my application's been in the city for three years, it's been in the city. We want to be able to say really how long it's been in the city. Hey, wait a minute, you've gotten us pieces of applications or it took you six months to get back to us. So we're trying to track things a bit more. Next slide, please. And if anybody has any questions, they can, of course, direct them to Patricia. This is her contact information. I also wanted to let the planning commission know that we are preparing a council report to document and present to the city council the responses that were submitted to the planning department in response to our request for planning services. We had a number of firms apply and these services range from basic counter service, advanced planning, staff report writing and inspection abilities. So we'll be presenting the results of that to the city council and our target is next month, getting that to them. And then, as we mentioned earlier, next week, we'll be presenting the responses to the ZO races comments that they, about what they'd like to see in a change in our TUP ordinance. So we'll be doing that. And I'm available for any questions. It looks like Commissioner Jennings has one.
Yes, I do.
Any of the other commissioners, sorry, my screen now got small, so that's the only commissioner I could see with the question. I think I'd buy as the John, Commissioner Mazza as well, sorry. And Commissioner Wetton?
Can I speak?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so this all sounds great. My first question is, as you know, anybody who's building has to go to the planning department and then to each of the other departments in order to get planning clearance. And then once you get planning clearance, you do the same thing again with building and safety in order to get the plan checked out. And so I guess my question is, is this going to be a unified system where the protocols and the forms and the, and the approaches you use are going to carry through not only from planning, but also through building and safety, so that there won't be confusion between, well, I did it this way in planning, but now. between, well, I did it this way in planning, but now when I'm going back for bill, for plan check, I've got to do it this other way. Uh, can you help me out on that? What's, what's the status there?
So to address that.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, do you hear me now?
I do now.
Okay, apologize. Wanted to make sure the microphone's on. To address that and I'm hopeful it went out last week, but I, and I didn't say this because I did, I, I didn't know if the RFP went out or not. Uh, the assistant city manager, Joseph Tony, put together a request for proposals to have a consultant come in and take a look at the entire development process. And that would encompass, uh, the concerns that Commissioner Jennings is bringing up, which is, is there some way to not duplicate efforts? Because yes, you go to public works twice and you, you go to the city geologist twice. Is there some way to streamline that method so that that information is retained so that you're not having to, to, to present it again? And also to make certain that there not, new things aren't popping up, to be more clear. So Joseph Tony, our assistant city manager, did put together a request for proposals. I believe his target was to get it published, uh, last week. And that person's task will be to make some comments on this whole process because we are, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, obtaining, obtaining, uh, software uh, for the new permitting software and tracking software, and that's permitting through the planning department, public works, all the various city departments through your building permit. And our hopes are that to get an outsider's perspective, to give some feedback, look what other cities have done, to try to make that process smoother from start to finish. Uh, so yes, Commissioner Jennings, something is in the works and we are trying to get somebody, uh, to, to really give us some feedback. And I would imagine as part of that process too, there would be some, uh, I'll call them stakeholder interviews, interviews with residents, uh, who've gone through the process and also, um, some of our regular expeditors, just so that this person understands what folks are experiencing, uh, because we, what you're saying, i- it's, it's not a new comment, it's, it's something we need to work on.
Um, just to finish it off, I'm going through my desk the other day, throwing away old papers and I came across the um, analysis, we, we, in two thousand and three, we hired uh, a planner from a guy who'd been very famous down in Culver City and had him come up and take a look at the planning department. He wrote a lengthy report on it. I'll, I've scanned it. I'll send you a copy.
Oh, it, it, the Winograd, uh, was it Mark Winograd?
Yes, it was.
Okay, yes, yeah, I know what you're talking about. Right, uh, Chair Mazza or Commissioner Wetton?
I'm good. My, my question was answered. Thanks.
Okay, uh, my question was, at one time we had a process where somebody who was dazed and confused could come in and spend an hour with a planner for like two hundred and fifty bucks. Have them tell them if they were headed in the right direction. Is that program still on or has that become all electronicized?
And so we still offer that. It's called our pre-designed submittal. And the idea is that somebody would request an appointment with the planner. And at that time, tell us what they want. Uh, and the idea was that the, the way it's planned in the fee study is that we would spend a portion of that fee was for research so that the planner could prepare for the meeting and then the other portion was to cover the city's time during the meeting, but it is called the pre-designed process.
Very valuable process. Um, okay. Now, did, did you want to take a question from Lauren Doyle? Richard?
I, I am more, more than glad to.
Okay, uh, I normally don't, we normally don't take the public questions with staff questions. Uh, can you un, unmute Laura?
Uh, yeah, hold on. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, I, I just wanted to support Richard's comment um, to, on twofolds. Uh, first to address Commissioner Jennings' comment. While we've been discussing with planning, all of the departments, public works, E H, all of us, you know, had a better streamline for planning, the same is true for building and safety where we get all of the comments back. And, uh, all the comments have to be addressed or, or they have to get comments back from all the departments before they're allowed to submit again, and that will prevent this kind of piecemeal sort of leapfrog progress of projects and make it more unified and streamlined. Um, and so we've all been meeting and committing to, to that, um, separate aside from the other processes that Richard mentioned. Um, and then the other thing is too, during counter hours, we do meet with people um, or we make appointments in support of the planning pre-design if they have technical questions. Um, we, we, uh, suggest meetings over the counter or, or other times that are convenient.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else have a question?
And, and Chairman Oz, if I could just say one other thing. I wanted to say I'm very sorry to say this, but Philip, uh, Cornell, who was one of the, the fire rebuild team planners. Uh, he is going to be leaving the city this coming Friday. I'll be sending a formal announcement out to the, the rest of the city, but I wanted to just publicly acknowledge him because Philip has provided many, many overtime hours um, doing his best trying to get fire rebuild victims their approvals in a timely manner. Uh, I know many times we've been in our meetings till eleven thirty at night and I've been getting and Philip will be emailing me during the meeting with notices of decisions. So I just wanted to publicly recognize him. He'll be leaving us for another city and I, I will be sending out an announcement.
Well, long way to ask Philip and, uh, hopefully you're the last.
I hope so too.
Okay, uh, Craig, nothing? Okay. So we're going to close, uh, manager's comment. And we're going to go on to consent item. Are there any items commissioners missed to pull?
Rebecca's got her hand up.
Rebecca, did I miss something?
Um, I was just going to check in with senior planner Thompson. I believe she had a, a quick overview in response to your question last week about exterior seating at, uh, adjacent, um, Howdy's Sunrisa Cafe.
Okay.
Yes, so I'll try to keep it brief for everyone and I'm happy to provide a, a more in-depth uh, over, overview at a later time. Uh, staff did approve an over the counter application for, um, an additional screening on the top of the open air trellis. Um, the planning department in conjunction with the building official uh, did determine that did not constitute as a covered roof material because water and air can pass through the specific material that they chose. Um, the building official did confirm that this does not count as a complete building enclosure. The remaining glass had already been previously approved and was to remain uh, forty percent open air as well, and then the ceiling will be open to air, uh, air able to pass through.
Okay, I, for one, would like you to come back with a, uh, official report. I went in there the other day and it, it looks to me like much more than forty percent is covered by glass. So hopefully you can come back with an official report. I didn't think we expected to have more coverage rather than less. So, if you would, thank you.
Understood. Yeah, we can come back with an official.
Thanks. Um. Okay, is that it for, uh, Richard's reports? Rebecca?
Um, I was just going to let the, there were people present in the meeting who had their hands up that I believe were here for item five C, which has now been continued. And so your comments will wait for the date that that item is heard.
Correct. Okay, we're now on consent items. Uh, are there any items pulled by the public?
And yes, uh, item three B three.
Okay, any items pulled by commissioners? Craig?
Yeah, I, I also have a question that just came up on three B six.
Three B six. And I'm gonna pull. Too many, three B seven. Okay, do we have a, well, and we, okay. All right, now we need to vote on approval of the minutes.
Just, just, uh, one and two, I'm looking that we, that, uh, we approve uh, the staff recommendation items three B one and three B two.
Okay, uh, we have to vote, so can you call a roll, please?
Sorry about that. I'm trying to jot those down quickly. Um, and Commissioner Jennings is moving approval of three B one and three B two.
Correct.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The procedure, uh, we have three B four. Nobody pulled, right?
The rest of them are all reading, uh, uh, reading file, John.
Okay, but we do have to vote separately on the minutes as I remember, which is three B two?
We just did, three B one and three B two.
Okay, I thought they had to be separate. Okay, so we are receiving and filing the balance. Uh, we now have three B three to consider. Uh, do we have a report on three B three?
Yes, I'll just give a brief staff report. Um, good evening, members of the planning commission. Um, the consent calendar item you have before you tonight is for the property located at five nine four two Fillery Heights. This is for de minimis waiver for a three thousand, six hundred and thirty-four gallon new septic tank with, in conjunction with a one thousand, seven hundred and fifty square foot dispersal field. This will be serving, uh, a fire rebuild residence. And staff is available for any questions as well as I believe their, uh, septic consultants on the call as well. Thank you.
You had a question, Craig?
Um. I do, I, I the public pulled this. I'm sort of curious to hear what somebody else has to say for.
I'm sorry, I thought it was you. Uh, who's the public speaker on this item?
Um, first I'd like to just verify with, uh, the applicant team, John Yaroslavsky, if he has any introductory comments or if you prefer to hold his time for Reese's bottle.
Sorry, I was just on mute. Um, I, I'll, I'll hold until end reply.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to Robert Brinkman. And Robert will be followed by Norm Haney and then Louise Tenna.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I'm the neighbor of fifty-nine forty-two. I live at fifty-nine forty Fillery Heights. Uh, fifty-nine forty-two, uh, did in fact burn down, uh, but, uh, the um, person who's rebuilding it is, is not a fire victim, so it's technically a fire rebuild, but what he's planning to build is my understanding is not anything close to what was there before. It was a very modest, about two thousand square foot, single story structure. Um, what he's trying to build and it's sort of going through in bits and pieces, they, they approved the original fire rebuild permit plus ten percent, which is a single story structure. Um, but it's actually was never designed as a single story structure. It was designed as a two-story structure. They sort of locked off the second story and pushed it through as a fire rebuild under those guidelines. Um, then they got an eighteen-foot concrete wall approved that goes, you know, way up over the single story structure. And it's my understanding that they're in the process of trying to get this second story through, which would affect our ocean view. Um, this is all not on the agenda today, so really all what I'm speaking to is the fact that part of the report or the report for this septic system actually includes uh, the plans for the house that he wants to build, which is over three thousand square feet and two stories. And the plans for those two stories are attached to the report on this, uh, septic system. Um, but that's not a structure that has as of yet been approved. In fact, it hasn't even been submitted to planning. So I just don't understand how they can attach these plans and use the fixture account from something that technically doesn't even exist yet. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, and now we have.
Thank you. And then, um, if we could open Norm Haney's microphone, I just want to verify, um, whether Norm and Louise are part of the applicant team or if they are here as private individuals.
Well, uh, gentlemen, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Hi, Norm.
Okay, hi. Um. I wasn't for or against this project until I looked at it and studied it. This is a project strictly for an onsite wastewater treatment system, an advanced wastewater treatment system. And, uh, it's it is a de minimis wa- waiver. They're not applying for a house. They're not applying for grading. They're not applying for retaining walls. It's simply an onsite wastewater treatment system. Um, and quite frankly, the larger, the better. If he doesn't get the addition to the house approved, he will have a uh, larger, uh, advanced wastewater treatment system than he needs. And that means that the effluent will actually go through the cleaning process to a greater extent than it would if he had a smaller tank. The longer the effluent stays in the tank, the more solids, uh, can floculate down to the bottom. The less solids have to be taken out by the, uh, aerobic process and by the filtration process. So this is a de minimis waiver. It's just for the wastewater treatment system. Uh, it's not for anything else. And so I'm, um, I think this project should move forward immediately and, um, we'll see where the chips fall on any kind of an addition or change, uh, to the previous house, uh, that the applicant may um, be successful in getting or unsuccessful. Thank you for your time.
Okay, uh, is, was tennis next? Let's see the one that. Yes, uh, you're open, Mr. Tanner. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, there you go.
Oh, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I am, uh, part of the design team. I designed the house and if you feel that there are any questions uh, outside of the, of the septic, which should be the, the topic discussed right now. I'm here to resolve them and also just to mention, there's a few ambiguities on what was stated by the, by the neighbors. So um, I will be happy to clarify if you feel that is appropriate in this, at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Joe Drummond, can you unlock her? Her on muter? There you go, Joe.
I just was listening in and I, I, this is obviously, it's going through because it didn't have to get a permit because of the, the waiving of the C D P for the fire rebuilds over ten percent. And this is exactly what we're talking about. The speculators who come in and build a bigger house block longtime residents views and build bigger than when they shouldn't be. It should just be ten or even twenty percent, but shouldn't be like just a free for all for everybody. So I'm just saying, just be careful when you're approving these kind of things. Thanks.
Any other public speakers? Okay.
If anyone else present in the meeting wishes to speak on this item, please indicate so now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. And seeing none.
Okay, uh, we're closing the public comment and Craig?
Yeah, an observation and a question. The observation is that, um, that the neighbor Brinkman, I apparently purchased in twenty eighteen. I had some contact with him via email. Um, and would have gotten a primary view determination, but that was precluded shortly after he purchased by the council's action to, uh, put those on hold. Um, and so that's just a I think just an unfortunate consequence here that, that, that was designed for a good in purpose and here now it's blocked somebody from using it in a, what would appear to be a legitimate way. Uh, the question, my question is if staff could please just refresh us about how this relates to the option for debacle. I think Joe touched on it, but my brain has little, literally traveled tens of thousands of miles since that was last discussed and this to me seems like exactly that, that they're piecemealing something bigger than a hundred and fifty percent. And, um, are, are we going to see the rest of this project soon? are, are we going to see the rest of this project soon? Or, or how, how does this play out in terms of the overall policy issues that have been happening at the city lately?
If somebody goes over 150%, then that would be a coastal development permit application. And 150% of the pre-fire structure. So these folks, what they've done is they processed, um, I don't want to misspeak here, so jump in if what, uh, Jessica, but we have the PV that was for the in-kind replacement of the house, plus a 10% addition. And then they submitted a separate application, uh, for an architectural wall. Uh, no new square footage. And then they had submitted a separate application for the repair of a retaining wall that's like a property line wall, correct Jessica? That's the one that is currently pending review. And when I say pending review, it's because, um, it was approved. And the neighbor to the project raised some concerns. And, uh, it's essentially like an appeal, it goes back to the planning director. And I take a look at it, and the reason why it comes to me is because, uh, there was nothing discretionary about it. And this comes from the authority of the 2004 code of, 2004, 2003 code update on development permits. Uh, the council created some applications that stopped with the director, whereas others, uh, go beyond the director to this commission and the city council. And then what the neighbor was talking about in terms of square footage being added to the house. Uh, Jessica, perhaps you have the exact detail, but there is a pending application uh, for, and I'll let you jump in on the amount of square footage, I don't have it in front of me.
Certainly. So the pre-fire square footage of the residence was at 3,265 square feet. The planning verification approved 3,139 square feet. And then the APR is for a 1,153 square foot, I believe, second floor addition. Um, however, that is still pending, uh, planning department review and has not been approved by the planning department.
Uh, are any of the walls in the side yard setback?
I believe they're along the property line, not, not the wall that we're discussing, the 18-foot, um, architectural wall, but the, the walls that are pending, the director's review, I believe, are along the property line.
Correct.
Okay, and, uh, this is just a, a, a question on procedure, but 18-foot walls, just freestanding walls are, are allowed?
So the 18-foot wall is actually part of the building. Uh, and it's 18 feet because we're measuring from it, the, the floor below. Uh, so a picture would be so much easier here, but you have the one-story building. And then there is a, like a roof deck, correct Jessica? Not misspeaking here. And then there is a wall that's approximately seven or so, eight feet high, which creates a windbreak and privacy for that deck. If you were to measure from the very top of that wall, pen's getting lost in the blue screen, from the top of the wall to the dirt below, including the first floor, uh, that's how you come up with 18 feet. It's not actually, um, like an 18-foot-high cinder block wall. However, from the neighbor's side, when you look at it with the first floor and then this eight or so feet of this rooftop deck wall, it, it's a 18-foot-high facade. Um, but that wall, if you were to look at it, it's just on the, the roof or second floor of the structure. It, it, it's the, we're including the first floor below, uh, to make sure he doesn't go over 18 feet because of view concerns.
Okay, um, well, since you used the unapproved building to make your, this determination for this septic tank, I'm going to call this serial development, and I'm going to make a motion to bring it back for a full hearing, if I can get a second.
Can I just, can I clarify? So this is not 150%, this is approximately 3,100-something, adding 1,100-something.
Jessica, do you have the numbers of what it?
She gave us the numbers, I could read them.
Yes.
The percentage, just to make it easy.
Uh, let me, let me double check.
It, it's my, uh,
It's less, but let me.
It is under the 150, but how much less?
Well, let me ask you something, Richard. I thought Coastal said, "Stop doing 150 until you made an amendment." So how is this still in the process?
It's less than 150 substantially.
Oh, witness pending application.
And, and as we discussed at the last city council meeting, we did meet with Coastal. Uh, they had requested that the city consider stopping. And we put applications on hold until we took direction from the council. And the council's direction was for staff to continue doing this until, uh, as June of 2023, which is when, uh, the exemption for the fire rebuilds, the permits have, uh, ends, uh, for building permits. And so that was the direction we were, uh, that was given to staff by council.
And the Coastal Commission agreed?
The Coastal Commission has not sent any comment or formal objection to the action taken by the committee, the council.
Okay, well, uh, Jeff?
Yeah.
Let Jessica answer the question first, please, and then we'll call you.
Sure. So the allowable 50% addition based on the pre-fire square footage would have been 1,632 square feet. And the proposed addition, which again is still pending, um, is 1,153 square feet. So it would be within that 50% less than.
Okay, Jeff?
Okay, this is a de minimis waiver. If you look at the LIP, there's only two issues. One is a septic system. Two, is it a septic system on a property that was needed, destroyed, or damaged in the walls of the fire? If you ask to have this thing brought back as a full CDP, those are the two questions that are going to be asked. Is it a septic system? Is it a, a septic system on a property that was impacted by the fire? The rest of this stuff is interesting, but has nothing to do with what's before us tonight. We don't have any documentation on it. We don't have any staff report on it. We don't have anything that's settled. All we're talking about is an onsite wastewater treatment system.
Um, the reason I made the motion is the staff used the 150% building to determine the septic tank. And they used that when it was not approved yet. So it's serial development based on future non-approved property. And, and serial development is not appropriate in Malibu. And it has never been appropriate. Uh, in fact, the one time, and, and I don't know how, whether it disappeared or it did disappear, you were not even allowed to put in an application within six months of your prior CDP. Or HCP. So that's why I'm making the motion. If I don't get a second, I'll get a second.
If, if the commission would like, uh, Ms. Doyle, uh, could speak also to the review that took place on the septic?
Does she have anything to do with septic?
Yes, she does. He has been helping the fire rebuilds.
I know she has, but does she have an engineering degree in septic tanks? That's who usually signs off on these. And that's who does the reports, not geologists.
I, I could let Lauren.
Yeah, I'd speak.
Yeah, I'd let you speak to your qualifications, Lauren. I don't want to misspeak.
Okay, Lauren, when, could you tell us if you are a certified septic engineer?
I don't think there is such an engineering degree as a certified septic tank engineer. The reviewers that do the review work for, um, EH are registered engineers. Um, my specialty with respect to fire rebuilds has been, um, doing both environmental health reviews as well as geotactical reviews. The only commentary I was just going to offer was just what's on the record with respect to what was originally permitted and what is being addressed under the de minimis waiver. Originally, what was permitted and how septic systems are designed is by bedrooms. Um, the original bedroom count that was permitted for this was, um, four bedrooms. And now they're reducing that to three bedrooms. And, um, so they're actually reducing by one bedroom. And in general, I would just say that with respect to, in upgrades, they're upgrading from a conventional system to an advanced treatment system, which since Malibu is under a regional water quality control board order, and the ocean is a 303D federally protected body of water. In general, we try to encourage people, if they can, to upgrade the system because it improves the quality of the groundwater and the quality of the runoff. So that's all I wanted to say, is it's really not so much related, in this particular case, to an increase in the size of the house. It's, uh, related to, uh, a desire to, uh, improve the, the system.
Well, that's not appeared on the sheet, but Jeff, your, your comment?
I'm sorry, I made mine.
Oh, okay, uh, lower your hand. Craig?
Yeah, um, Norm is, Norm is right. This is, this is a 3,600-some gallon tank, which is appropriate and normal for, for this size house. So it's, there's, there's something not good going on with the rest of the application with respect to the neighbor and everything, but that's not in front of us right now. So.
Okay, so.
I don't see, I don't see a choice to second your motion.
Okay, so, uh, it's been pulled, there's no, uh, consensus to continue the item, so it's, uh, been consented to. Uh, our next item is, um, somebody have been canceled, let's see.
Number six, I believe.
3B6. Who pulled 3B6?
Oh, I did. Yeah, I, I, I just noticed, uh, a short while ago that, um, the geology report states, quote a line here, percolation testing of four potential seepage pits was performed. However, the project geotechnical consultant determined that borings B1 and B2 were unsuitable for percolation testing. And that borings B3 and B4 failed to percolate the required 10-foot drop in water level during the pre-soak. So they, they did two, they did four bores, two of them were unsuitable and two of them failed. So my question is, how does that pass as acceptable geology? If they don't have a, a working percolation test?
If I could get Lauren, oh, there's, Lauren, are you able to help out with this question and how the review is conducted?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, uh, can you repeat the question again, Commissioner Hill? And, and tell me what document you're referring to, because I just want to make sure we're referring to the most recent material.
I'm referring to the geology report. I, I, uh, cut and paste the quote out of it into my notes, so I can't tell you exactly which page it is now, I'm sorry.
Which, which geology report is that? It's important because...
It, it's the one immediately appended, it's the most recent one in the PDF stack that I read. So if there were other earlier ones, that's not what I'm quoting from.
Okay, I think the appropriate person to speak to this would be John Yaroslavsky. So, um, if you could unmute him, since I didn't do the review, so I, I don't want to speak to something I, I'm not immediately familiar with.
Yeah, John, are you aware of the, the phrase that I'm quoting here?
Are we, are we still talking about the same project?
We're talking about 3B6 winding way.
Okay.
You want to hear the quote again?
Yes, sir.
Um, "Percolation testing of four potential seepage pits was performed. However, the project geotechnical consultant determined borings B1 and B2 were unsuitable for percolation testing. And that borings B3 and B4 failed to percolate the required 10-foot drop in water level during the pre-soak." So, uh, you know, not being an expert, what I see is two of the holes didn't work and two of them failed, so how is this a yes?
Uh, let me look at the project real quick, because I do not have it in front of me, I was on for a couple other projects.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm not sure that John is the, the, can you tell me the address again?
I'm actually trying to send a Zoom link, uh, to the applicant for the project. Uh, Lynn He Cox has been unable to join the meeting, and I think he is looking somewhere other than.
Which address is this?
It's, uh, 27580.
27580 winding way. Now, I'll, I'll, I'll do a keyword search on my document here, and I can maybe tell you the exact page this is on. Uh...
I'm not seeing that in my project files.
Yeah, see, I don't, I, I'm sorry, I thought we were still on 5942.
Because, because that one.
This is, this is Kevin Poppenberger.
Yes, it's EPD, Lauren, sorry, I wish.
Yeah, it's Kevin Poppenberger's project, I'm sorry. So I'll have a quick look at this then. John is not the one, I'm sorry, I thought we were still on the last project.
Okay.
For some reason.
I just sent the Zoom link to, um, Lynn He Cox, and hopefully he will be joining the meeting shortly.
Now I'm getting, having trouble getting the PDF to open.
Right, because we just approved this, uh, this was just approved on the 14th of September. Previously, the June, um, review was not an approval. And so then there was a response submitted in July, and an addendum geo-report submitted in August. So those might be the reports you're referring to, Commissioner Hill. And so I'm, I'm looking at those now.
Yeah, for some reason, my find-on-page option is not appearing here. Don't know why.
Okay, hold on, let me take a quick look and see what's what here. Okay.
Let me see if I can find it in the hard copy.
I, I, I have it if...
You have the quote?
Well, I have the quote, it's, it's on page two of the geotechnical review sheet.
What's the date of the, that review sheet? That's important, it sounds like.
Uh, let's look, August 11th.
Yes, that, that would be appropriate, because the date of the report in which they respond to the failed tests, Commissioner Hill, the date of that report is, uh, it's by EPD. It's July 13th, 2022.
Which is before August.
Yeah.
Right. So that's right, so it would be reviewing the August report.
So John, or I'm sorry, Mark, you have the, um, you have the, the language right there and the date in August. And it doesn't sound like there's anything more recent than that.
I don't see it.
I don't know why my thing won't open, I'm going to try to find my hard copy.
And we do now have, uh, the applicant present in the meeting.
Uh, okay, I, I am looking, there is an explanation in the August 11th, uh, or the July report about the failed tests, sta- stating that they did not fail, rather were terminated early for reasons beyond the control of the undersigned engineering manager. So apparently, there were issues with the way the tests were conducted, but ultimately, um, there were, um, passing tests, because we would never approve a project with failing percolation tests. That's one of the key things that, that is looked at. Um, both from a geotechnical standpoint and from an EH standpoint. And that's all I have to say about the project.
But you would have evidence of that, correct?
Yes, there, it should, y- y- you have to provide evidence of passing tests. Yes, there it should, y- y- you have to provide evidence of passing tests that are done in. Uh, using methods that are acceptable to the city of Malibu um. As stated in the WTS uh manual.
Okay, so uh Richard approved this, did you look at those? Test, Richard.
No, we did not. Those, we rely on the expertise of our technical experts in the city. Uh, as planners, I know. Earlier you asked about someone with an education or uh. A septic degree, and that's not us, that's where we rely on the city's engineers.
Understand that, but. You, you, they present you with some kind of evidence. That there is an acceptable se- septic test, don't they? And it doesn't appear to be in in this report, doesn't appear to exist. Since this was done on August twenty second.
John, Lynn, he has his hand up, is that, is that?
Lynn is the applicant, yes.
Uh, can you hear Lynn?
Good ideas.
Get that unmute, Lynn.
Hi, Mr. Vice Chairman Lynn He Cox, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Fine, yeah, thank you, did you hear my questions?
Yeah, I did hear all the questions, let me just give you a brief background.
Mm-hmm.
We have a single family home. That the applicant, the client. Had acquired in the year two thousand. He pulled building permits for that single family home. That home has not increased in size. Uh, the home right now is a one-story home less than eighteen feet. It has not increased in size. The size of the home is under three thousand square feet, has not increased in size. The home is still consistent with all the side yard setbacks and uh our planner um uh.
Oh.
Uh, yeah.
Allison.
Our planner will confirm all of that. As a result of moving a swimming pool, the swimming pool will move over to those failing Commissioner Hill. Toward those failing seepage pits. That were unsatisfactory. We went through a four-month investigation to come up with new percolation tests, we have a new geo float system, which is the evapotranspiration system. Which is to the west of the property. That geo flow system has the size of twelve thousand square feet. And is perfectly satisfactory, in fact, excessively satisfactory for the four-bedroom home. That is the press system that we're going to be approving tonight. It's this new geo flow system to serve the existing residents. We have an operating system that was approved by the septic system consultants back in two thousand when the property owner required the property. But as soon as people retired, retained to uh start processing the pool application. I told them all that we need a new septic system, because the existing septic system is going to fail. And the property owners said, well, what do we do, and I said, well, we need to do, do, I mean, then we need to do an extensive investigation. Of the property with our geologists, with our percolation people. To determine where we can put in a new system, and they were drilling holes and drilling holes. And then they came up with an evapotranspiration system that covers twelve thousand square feet. Of percolation area to the west of the house that will satisfy. Uh. Greater than a four-bedroom house, but this is going to be a four-bedroom house with the appropriate number of fixture units.
Oh, uh, Lynn, you're telling us that no seepage pits are required?
The seepage pits are not being required, in fact, the seepage pits that we have on site right now with the septic tank are all being abandoned. We have a pool. Which was sitting south of the home that's being remodeled. And that pool, the clients wanted the whole pool to be moved closer to their home. And I said that would be perfectly satisfactory, because based on the septic system reports that are in my hands, those seepage pits are all failing. Those pits are all going to be abandoned, as is the existing septic tank, we're putting in a brand-new septic tank, a new distribution box. And twelve thousand square feet of evapotranspiration system. The old septic system is going to be completely abandoned and removed. The new, the new pool will be in the location where the old septic system used to be.
Right, okay, Lynn, I'm sorry, all that sounds fine and dandy, it does, and I understand it all. I guess this is a question for our new planner, uh, Ms. Myers, how do you pronounce it, Alice, Allison?
Allison.
Allison.
Greg, let me interject something, the project description. On the page one of the administrative development permit describes. The situation Lynn just said, a twelve thousand. Foot dispersal system is what is being approved.
Okay, so the language um referring to the the failed and un- undoable percolation. Testing is just entirely relevant, irrelevant. But is that the right reading here?
That's. Correct.
That's what it says in the project description.
Okay, that was, I read that in the geotechnical review remarks, it seemed like a negative to me, and I guess my question has been answered. So, thank you.
Okay, any other speakers on this? Uh, hearing nothing else that's received and followed. Um. So we're now off to three B seven. And. I'll tell you what. Why I pulled this. Um. I pulled it and I calculated the. TDSF of the house compared to the original TDSF. From the staff report. The original TDSF was four thousand and one feet. And then. I looked at the new house. And the staff neglected to count. A ten-foot high. Um. Eight hundred and twenty-two square foot. What was called a crawl space, but it's ten foot high and includes equipment and is in, and is surrounded by walls. Uh, with an entrance from the floor above. So that adds makes the square footage sixty-five hundred and thirty-eight square feet. Which is a hundred and sixty-three percent. Of the original house. Though it's not qualified to uh. Not have a CDP. And 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 I know of no case where we've ever said a ten-foot crawl space. Uh, imposed by walls with an entrance from above. With equipment in it. It is not countable as total development square footage.
Commissioner Maza, are you looking at the secondary dwelling unit or the existing single-family residence? Or if you wouldn't mind pointing me to a page, I'm happy to.
Okay, if you look at uh. The plan. The plan right before environmental review. They have a uh. They show the whole, the whole uh, we had a full set of plans too, we can look at that, and that would be A one point one. And A one point two. Let me find out, this was the address in this place. Verizon. And it's, you know, it's pretty glaring, because it's all enclosed. It has the stairway down to it from the outside and an entrance from the inside.
I believe that was approved, I will double check, I believe um that was already approved under the planning verification for the guest house. Um, this would just be for the conversion to adassink, but let me just double check one moment.
Well, it's not included in the square footage calculation. On page one of the staff report, it says. Total. Twelve square footage, four thousand and one, house twenty-six seventy-seven, garage five oh two, guest house eight twenty-two. And you calculate the first four of the guest house, it comes out to eight twenty-two. When you calculate the the second calculation. The only thing that changes is. The fact that the eight twenty-two, the eight, the second eight twenty-two on the two-story guest house. Uh. Says crawl space, it's not counted. And it's sewn on section one on page one point one. Of the plans. And it's also on. Of all the sections on two point O.
Sorry, I'm just pulling up the previous planning verification approval.
Chair Maza, while Ms. Thompson is doing that, do we want to open it up to the applicant and any uh public comments? Or do you want to continue the the questions first?
Sure, raise your hand and we'll, we'll open it up.
So, um. Kate Gabbard is the applicant for this, and there is a Joshua Gabbard in the meeting, but I believe that would be the identity that she's under at the moment.
Okay.
Hi, how you doing? This is Josh Gabbard, thanks for having me.
Okay, you know what the, what we're talking about?
I do, this is, this is the the basement, I mean, the living space is the, is the 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 top floor, I guess you're saying, this is the the same thing that was lost in the fire. There's no access to it from the outside, the the crawl space that you're talking about. There's no access from the outside or anything, there's a, there's a. Floor opening from the, from the, the, the. Closet, but there's, it's not a living space. But again, this is the same thing we lost in the fire, there was no difference.
Uh, your, your building is eight hundred and twenty-two square feet per floor, correct?
There's only one floor to the building, it's built on a, on a ledge, the the guest house is built on a ledge, as you can see, the the area that you're talking about takes up. Roughly half of. The the square space that the 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 guest house sits on.
Well, unfortunately, and and Jessica could answer this, unfortunately, anything over six feet is counted. And this is ten feet. Uh, and it's also raised above the uh. Surface and it is enclosed. So um. It counts as TDSF if it's over six feet.
I don't know anything about that, that's not what what we're even on this this docket for, so that's news to me, this is, this is what we we applied for, because this is what we lost and it's what we were approved for.
Okay, Jessica, do you see what I'm talking about?
Jessica, are you able? To bring up the planning verification? I believe the confusion here lies in the fact that there was a non-conformity. Should prior to the fire. And then. Joshua, we've mentioned, we've had situations in the Malibu Park neighborhood where because homes are built. Over a slope, and that's the way they were prior to the fire, they had. These voids under them. And. I wish the building official were here, uh, we would have, of course, had her here, had we known this was going to come up. But under the building code. These voids have to be enclosed, uh, they they can't be open spaces. And so that's why I was looking at the plan to confirm, and Jessica, perhaps you have a better plan. But. It is just that, it is a void, I don't see any doorways. I only see um. Little vents, like you would have typically on a raised foundation. And so there are some of these that were put back. Commissioner Maza is correct, if it was a new building, yes, we were, when I say new, not a replaced building, but uh. These folks were in front of you today to say, hey. Planning commission, I I want to build this building. Um, we would definitely be looking at that area. And. Uh, definitely counting it as square feet, but in the case of this one. Uh, what you can see. It it does have a concrete floor, and I wish their engineer was here to confirm this. Uh, but that concrete floor may be structural, I'm trying to read the small print here, just mechanical. Uh, maybe structural to tie the foundation together. And then, like I, as I mentioned, if you look around it, um, there. There is no access uh being approved into that area. It is strictly a crawl space, there are no doors. Uh, there are only the uh. One-foot openings along the top that are required for every hundred and fifty square feet of crawl space.
Yes, but it's crawl space.
Correct, but it was there prior to the fire.
Stairway going down to it on the outside and an entry from above. So. Any house in Malibu, I can understand it if you certified it as being there. But it's, it it wasn't, you said there was four thousand and one square feet there. And there's now. Sixty-five hundred and thirty-eight. It's undisputable.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair, but I don't see an interior staircase?
Uh, if you look on, well, it's not a staircase, it's a hole for one. And it's uh on. Land number. There's no staircase, they they build that later, um. There's a door, you'll see it.
You're talking about sheet A one one in the lower right-hand corner, section number two?
Yeah. You see that little white hole in there? That's, that's a, that's a trapdoor.
Correct, that's for access to the mechanical space below.
And it's mechanical space. It's mechanical space, it's enclosed, it has an exterior stairway and a deck. It has a deck.
It doesn't have, it's a fire department access, the five-foot access around the building.
Okay, but. What I'm saying is. That building. Under our codes. Double in size. Under our codes.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm trying to throw up the plans, apparently on base is in, is down, I can't get access to that.
Excuse me, could I ask just one question?
Yes.
Haven't. Haven't both the building and the accessory dwelling, or the accessory uh unit there, the guest house? Already been approved under the planning verification?
That's correct.
Not for, why are we spending time talking about this, it's already been approved, if you wanted to appeal the decision, John, you would have had to appeal it during.
No, it was approved, Jeff, it was approved for eight hundred and twenty-two square feet. It's off by eight hundred and twenty-two square feet, you can have an approval for eight hundred and twenty-two square feet.
The application, excuse me, John, the application is not before us.
This is a hundred and sixty-three percent, so therefore the whole project does not qualify. And there's no question that they approved the eight hundred and twenty-two square foot guest house. This is a six hundred, sixteen hundred and forty-four square foot guest house. So it was not approved.
As I mentioned.
For eight hundred and twenty-two square feet.
This was a pre-fire existing condition.
It was enclosed.
That's my understanding.
Yes.
And and you didn't count it because of what?
It was a crawl space under the home, it wasn't being used as a living space. It is something that it. I don't disagree that it's not consistent with our current code. Uh, but the applicant processed a fire rebuild. Planning verification in a timely manner to maintain their county uh approved non-conformities. And that is why we haven't counted the space, now, if they were to install a staircase. Put windows on that space, put a doorway on that space, then that's a different situation, that's new square footage, but if you look at those plans. The only. That room, uh, that crawl space down there only has ventilation openings, the one per hundred and fifty uh square feet. At one square foot per one fifty square feet, as required by the code. And there is no exterior access, uh, one wall is completely underground, the other three are exposed. But have no doors, only the ventilation cutouts along the top portion of the wall, as shown on the plans.
Well, that sounds like the house on Lotte Go. Except it wasn't enclosed, do you have evidence that this was enclosed prior to the fire?
I, we, I, I believe we do again, so I'm having a trouble, we can't access our on-base for me to pull up the PV approved plans and what documents they use to verify that.
It had a poured floor.
Well, once again, the poured floors are also part of the building code requirement, uh. It, there. I've learned there have been situations where you need a structural slab that ties the foundation elements together. And that is, uh, uh, I can't think of the house, uh, we did one up on, uh, just behind the high school for one school teachers, and. There was no way to avoid having that concrete poured there to tie the foundation system together. And so.
Down walls.
I, 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 I'm sorry, I think this one, we will give you the best we have on information, and perhaps the applicant. Can provide some additional, but you have a, unfortunately, a non-conforming situation that. that was consistent with the, uh, the codes and was permitted as such.
John, I, my, my question might speak to Jeff's concern, which is just that the PV, if I understand correctly, was for a guest house. This is now a new use they're proposing, a second unit with the kitchen. Does the fact that it's being a different new use take it out of that sort of grandfathered status that we get from the PV and make it new in a way that your numbers would, would become relevant now?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if the PV said it was sixteen hundred and forty-four square feet, I have no problem. But it said eight hundred and twenty-two. And under our codes, when you add square footage, ten-foot-high building room, ten-foot-high rooms with cement floors, uh, that are enclosed, you've brought this up many times, Craig. It's over six feet. It counts. And, and it counts even if there's no legal doorway into it.
Well, I, I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to agree unless they ha- already have, uh, obtained the PV with the current situation.
But they haven't.
You think the numbers are wrong, that the staff made a mistake when they granted the PV? That the PV has been granted?
Yeah, the staff said it's four thousand and one. It's not.
Listen back, John. This is a home. You're basically saying they can't put back what they had.
No, we don't know that's what they had. We don't know this was enclosed. We don't know this had a cement floor. We don't know anything other than what it is now. And if you look at cross-section one, there's absolutely no question. There's a ten-foot room in there that's called a crawl space. And we have never approved the crawl space over six feet. Ever.
And, and maybe just, once again, not, not to add anything of great substance, you guys, it's you guys', you know, the decision. We've, we've talked about this quite extensively. I believe you all know the, the option. It's either to, to bring it back as a, as a full CDP. And so, you know, unless there's anything else to potentially flesh out or, or discuss, that may be the.
I, I think Jessica should have the info at hand that would clarify this straight up. But what was on base isn't working right, or what's the problem?
Yeah, that's correct. We are on basis down, so I'm unable to access the planning verification plans. Um, I believe that all that was included in the planning verification, but I want to pull up the plans to confirm, to make sure.
So let, let me suggest something. If the applicant said, okay, um, forget it. We're not going to convert it. We're just going to, we're not going to add the kitchen. We're going to keep it as a guest house. And we're going to build it. And then in six months, they come back in and they say, oh, by the way, we want to put a kitchen in here. Um, there isn't anything to stop that, right?
Yes. What there is, is that the, the planning verification was for eight hundred and twenty-two square feet. And when they come back in, it's still not eight hundred and twenty-two square feet. It's six hundred and forty-four, sixteen forty-four.
I, I think you have a strange view of what actually gets discussed when you come back in to do a modification.
I do.
I do.
You get total development square footage. And it comes out at sixty-five thirty-eight.
But as I understand it, adding for adding a kitchen does not, maybe I'm wrong. I was under the impression that the kitchen was going to be added without adding additional, uh, square footage. Is that right or wrong?
The, the point is, is.
That's correct.
Richard is not allowed, not allowed under the code, to give a planning verification over a hundred and fifty percent. So that's invalid.
So.
You, you can't do that, can you, Richard? You can't increase the house fifty percent without coming to us.
I wish that we had access to the plans because that's why it's a crawl space. They, they have, and I think perhaps this is where it'd be good to have, uh, Josh Gabbard jump in and explain and paint the picture of what was there prior to the fire. There were a number of homes where they had these spaces that, you are correct, we would not permit today. However, the question began, how do you let somebody replace that structure in the fire? Um, you can't lower the structure because then now you've got an access problem, and now you're also changing the grading, and you're not building on the same pad. So you, you let these folks put back what they had. And there's, then the issue of it has to be built to today's standard, which that's why you see a floor. So staff has not permitted any new square footage. That if we were to recognize that square footage, then I would agree completely with the commission that we are approving over a hundred and fifty percent. But there are a number of homes in this area that have these enclosed spaces that were not counted as square footage. And therefore, we continue to not count them as such, provided that they were submitted to us in a timely manner, consistent with the ordinance for planning verifications. Uh, because yes, we have, um, I hate to say it, an informal interpretation that anything above six feet counts as, uh, floor space. And we have definitely been applying that to new development. But once again, we're in a situation here with the rebuild.
But I have no evidence at all before me that this isn't like most of the houses built in that era that were built on stilts. Okay, that's why they burned down. Because the fire got under it. I don't know I probably couldn't find a house of that age that had an enclosed underhouse room with vents. I don't think I could find one if I drove around. So just saying, while it probably had, it's, it's a lot different than knowing it had. And when you go through the calculations and you look at this, you go, gee, what's going on? It's very easily, you could have raised that four, four feet. It'd still tie into the foundation. It still would have been legal. It still, and it still wouldn't have counted. But it's a ten-foot room. And it's a large one. And it's got exterior, exterior access and interior access. And you don't put a, uh, tra- in my opinion, you don't put a trapdoor on a floor. When you pull it up, you have to fall ten feet before you find something to land on. That's not how you access crawl spaces. There's no ladder. There's no nothing.
John, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I, I'd like to, in the absence of, uh, clear documentation on this, I'd like to move that we continue this and have it settled.
Can we continue?
I mean, we're, we can stand here and, and argue about it, but.
No, I, I, I agree with your motion, except that these are time-sensitive. And you can't continue them, can you, Patrick?
In the past, we have said no, that you either bring your motion or you receive and file.
Correct. Uh, Commissioner Jennings is accurate. There's, the two options are to receive and file, or of course, bring it back for the, the full CDP process.
So what all I can say is, that's our only solution, Craig. And I'm going by what's, we have to go by what's presented to us. And what was presented to us is, appears to be a miscount on the total development square footage.
What was our final, uh, outcome on the Lattigo House?
Oh, the, the city council gave a three-story house.
We allowed the, the Lattigo House, and we allowed the area to be developed.
Yeah, which was not this case. In that case, they admitted that they built out a, a, unenclosed space.
I'm not sure how they think that makes it better, but.
Is it worth hearing from the applicant one more time to see if they can give us any more clar- clarity?
Sure.
Maybe.
Uh, John.
Got his hand up.
I'm ready. Thank, thank you, guys. We are building exactly what we lost. We lost eight hundred and twenty-two square feet with an enclosed basement underneath, whatever you want to call it, basement. It was enclosed, always has been enclosed, and is enclosed still. There is no access to it other than a small portal inside of the, the closet. The stairs that you see on the outside of the plans are for fire access around the side of the building. We are building exactly what we lost. Eight hundred and twenty-two square feet of living space. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, deny the diminence waiver and bring it back.
It, it's.
This is an ACDP.
Well, whatever it is, AC, ACDP. For clarification. And if the evidence proves it, it's a very simple thing to do. Uh, we vote yes, it was existing. But according to the staff report, that space was not counted. There's no evidence it was should not have been counted. And, uh, none in the staff report. And I go through every number in here and show you that. That's.
So we have a motion on the floor. Do we, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll say in the absence of clear documentation, I will second that motion because what I see in the plans is a two-story structure.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
Yes, so the motion is to deny, to, to deny uh, the application or to continue it?
No, the motion, it's kind of technical. We can't continue on, uh, items that have a expiration date on the approval. So we bring it back as a CDP. They can bring back the same rock, the same staff report with the explanation as a CDP.
What it's saying is that, is that it shouldn't be allowed to go forward as an administrative, uh, CDP. It has to be brought back for a full CDP. That means everything has to be redone and resubmitted to planning staff.
Well, I don't know why it would be resubmitted. All the drawings and everything is there. It's just a question of whether they, they have the evidence that it should not be counted.
Let's take a vote.
And, and if I may, quickly before the vote, just to make sure we have a clear for Rebecca, this would be a vote to deny the ACDP for the conversion to make this structure a second unit, not the construction of the structure.
That is what's before the planning commission tonight. It's just that conversion.
Well, yeah. I, I would say that that's faulty, but, uh, you can say what you want. Uh, I, if, if the planning director, if we find that the planning director miscalculated the square footage, then his, his determination is not allowed. He's not allowed to do that.
And there's an appeal. There. John, there's an appeal period.
Correct. And, and, and this is not the appropriate forum to, once again, what's?
The, the CDP is the appropriate forum.
Sure. And let's get, and that, and that motion is, is before you, and, and as I said, the application before you is for the, the ACDP for, to convert an existing guest house into a sec- secondary dwelling unit. You all, of course, are very, very familiar with the, with the report and, and everything before you and, and, and what's there. We have a motion and we have a second.
Okay, so let's take a vote. Can we, can you call the roll?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Wetton?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
So it's a receiving file. Right? There's no other procedural avenue here.
Correct. Yeah, there, 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 you needed a majority of the quorum, i.e. three out of four.
Okay. Now we are on. We will continue.
I believe that, I agree on four A, but of course Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
That is correct.
Okay, we're on four A. Can we have a staff report?
Good evening, Vice Chair Mazza. Numbers of the planning commission. Um, next item tonight is for a view preservation permit for the property located at seven one seven zero Birdview Avenue. Next slide, please. So both the concerned properties for this application are on the land side of Birdview Avenue. The red star here denotes the claimant, which is seven one seven zero Birdview. And the yellow star denotes the foliage owner, which is seven one six eight Birdview. The owner of seven one seven zero Birdview got a primary view determination deducted with the city in January of 2013. The nature of the PVD was primarily to protect views of the Pacific Ocean to the Southwest. Next slide, please. NMC chapter seventeen point four or five requires that a PVD owner or claimant, as the chapter describes, goes through a series of steps before they can apply for a view preservation permit if their view has been obstructed. So first, the claimant must send the foliage owner an informal letter by certified mail notifying them of the view impact. If the formal discussion is refused or ignored, then the claimant can send a request for mediation by certified mail. If after sixty days, the mediation is refused or ignored, then the claimant can send the foliage owner a letter requesting binding arbitration, also through certified mail. If after sixty days, the binding arbitration is refused or ignored, the claimant can request that the planning commission make a decision on the matter. So on June twenty-second, twenty twenty, the claimant sent a letter for informal discussion through certified mail. On September eighth, twenty twenty-one, the claimant sent a request for mediation through certified mail. After sixty days, the claimant had not heard from the foliage owner, so a letter requesting binding arbitration was sent on December fourteenth of twenty twenty-one. The claimant had still not heard from the foliage owner, even after an additional sixty days. So they submitted their application for this view preservation permit on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Next slide, please. The next few slides will show pictures of the PVD documented in January of twenty thirteen and compare them to staff photos that were taken in April of twenty twenty-two. Original PVD photos on the left and the twenty twenty-two photos on the right. For the view looking north, there isn't much of an issue shown here. Next slide. Views looking northwest, still not much of a difference here. Next slide. The view condition looking west may have actually improved, uh, since twenty thirteen. Next slide. Views to the southwest appear to have been disrupted by overgrown foliage at seven one six eight Birdview Avenue in these photos. The photo from twenty thirteen shows a much more visible horizon line of the Pacific Ocean than the twenty twenty-two photo. Next slide, please. Views to the south also appear to have heard from overgrown vegetation on seven one six eight Birdview Avenue. Again, much better horizons, uh, horizon line than the twenty thirteen photo. So the staff recommendation is that the foliage owner cut the overgrown vegetation, uh, below the hedge line as a documented, as documented in the twenty thirteen PVD. And that's the end of my presentation, and we're open for any question.
Okay, uh, who was first? Jeffrey Craig?
Yeah. Oh, I, probably because I didn't put my hand down, but it's been a while since, since, um, this view preservation ordinance was passed, and I don't think, this is the first time we've, we've been asked to enforce it. Exactly how, what's the procedure? We make an order? And then what? We send Richard out with a pair of pruning shears to go cut it? Or how do we, how does it get accomplished? How do we get it done? Does the person have to go to court? Does the sheriff do it? How does, how does it get happen?
So there's conditions in the resolution that, um, if they don't act, I think we gave them thirty days. Uh, so, you know, ten-day appeal period plus a twenty, an additional twenty days. Uh, then, then there could be code enforcement action if they do not cut their trees. Um, I think that, uh, Richard or, or Patrick directed, if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure that they could probably take this to a higher court, right? Um, you can appeal this to city council or, or, you know, a judicial court. Um, but, uh, if no appeal is filed and the decision of the resolution is approved, then, um, you know, the conditions we have imposed will come into effect thirty days from, from today. And, and yeah.
I would like to speak up for a second here. We need to do disclosures on this before we get too far into this hearing. Um, does anybody have disclosures?
None for me.
None for me.
No.
Okay, I do. I'm in the, a, uh, I've gone through this process in Laguna Beach, uh, which has a very similar but slightly different ordinance. But I'm very familiar with how these things work. Um, Craig?
Yeah, just a technical question about the presentation. I, I didn't really understand the discussion about the clarity of the horizon line. What I saw was that the camera used had a slightly different uh, focal length with the lens the second time, so. Uh focal length with the lens the second time, so. There was some inherent difference in the the proportionality of the images. Beyond that, I'm not sure what what you were trying to point out as being different with the horizon.
Yeah, we can bring those pictures back up and I can I can explain.
I mean, it clearly from a few angles, I saw that a lot of brush has grown or or shrubbery of some sort has grown in the meantime. But I I just didn't understand what you meant by. The horizon. It seemed like it's just a question of the the focal length and the angle it was shot at.
Well, there was one picture was pretty obvious. And if you look at the palm trees, you can tell.
Yeah, what's I mean, you should be.
Next one, please.
And and yeah, and 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 just and and once again, before it's for these types of hearings, it's very important that we. And once again, Commissioner Hill, this is a great question. Phil can can clarify kind of the technical aspect, as you said. But but let's let's really reserve any type of prior judgment on it. Nothing like that. Let's just ask your question about. That and then we can open the hearing and of course. After that, you guys are more than welcome to to make comments and analysis.
To to make a proper comparison, wouldn't you rectify the two horizon lines?
Yeah. All we did was recreate the PVD. So the PVD requires that you go five feet from the grade. And that's all. That's all we did. Um, you know, unfortunately, I don't know exactly a full length or. You know what camera was used back in twenty thirteen, but all we can do is recreate the PVD and that's what was done in these photos. Uh, horizon line I meant is the, you know, where the ocean touches the sky.
Right, and I see in the photos, one horizon line is here and the other photo it's up here. Theoretically, they should be the same photo, so. It's hard. It's hard to compare them apples for apples.
You mean, and and Tyler, I I don't mean to to interrupt, you know, this is as Commissioner Jennings noted. You know, this is not. Something that we do a lot. We do not have. Super specific technical parameters as it pertains to focal length and and lining them up. Those pictures. Are what's been provided to you all. If 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 those are. Insufficient in your opinion to 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 make any of the required findings, that's entirely your prerogative. Um, but there's no, you know, we 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 don't have a set checklist of various technical technical components, i.e. Camera uh lens, and I I apologize, you're talking to a very naive individual when it comes to photography, so if I use the wrong vernacular, that's on me. We don't really have that. As as Tyler said. They re- they recreated the the PVD to the to the best of their ability and 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 if that's insufficient. Um, for 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 the for the commission, so be it, but that's that's kind of what you have before you.
Let me let me try to be clear.
Explain something to you real quick. I don't know if you've looked over the law, but. The applicant for the view. Can pick any spot as long as it is in certain rooms like bathrooms and bedrooms. And they can go out from that spot ten feet maximum. And take and have and the staff takes the picture, not the applicant.
I I I'm sorry, are you addressing me or just generally? Because I I know all this. I I know all this. I have a PVD. I'm I'm aware.
Hey, but five feet is is what they have to use.
Yeah, no, so so here's, if I can clarify my question. Yes, I agree. One can sort of interpolate and 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 interpret given two sets of slightly different angles. The question was, what were you trying to tell us about the horizons being different? That I didn't understand.
Am I allowed to speak on this, Patrick, or do you want to open this up for?
I mean, I think I think I think that specific clarifying question, i.e. And what's gonna, I don't I don't recall the 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 comment, however, I'm I'm sure you made it, Commissioner Hill, I'm not done. So when you said the. The horizons were 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 different, if you want to provide a little bit of context to that, that that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, the picture does it. I mean. The picture is worth a thousand words, right? Um, horizon line is again where the where the ocean. Meets the sky and uh, you know, there's 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 a there's a difference there.
Um. I I'm not sure what you were saying was different about it.
Well, there's foliage, there's foliage in the horizon line that was not there before.
Well, it so now and so now I I I am going to jump in and and Tyler, you know, I I think that. That that we we can safely say that 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 Tyler's comment was one of a. Holoquial descriptor and not a technical, specific code determination. Tyler, is that fair in terms of? Just how you were viewing it, and this is how the the Carmen, the common parlance, in no way was that a technical finding. Specific to the code meant as a declarative factual statement, rather that is up to you to make the that, you know, those. Determinations based on the on the code language and the evidence before you tonight.
Okay, so I didn't miss anything substantive.
Correct, so can we open the public?
Yeah, please, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Okay, uh, can we have the? Applicant uh first.
So our claimants are claimants are Alima and Frank Longo.
And you have fifteen minutes. You can reserve any portion of that for rebuttal. Are they open?
Yes.
Uh, council members, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this this is Frank Longo. Um, so I I think uh, I think Tyler was correct. Um, the pictures speak a thousand words. You can tell from. The pictures that were taken in twenty thirteen and the pictures that were taken in twenty twenty two. Uh, evidence that the the foliage. In seven one six eight have grown higher than what the hedge line was back in twenty thirteen when. The view easement was granted. Um, we we've lived. Uh, behind this neighbor for over thirty years. It's always been maintained at the hedge line. Uh, we've actually always gone in and and cut it. Uh, at our expense. Uh, during that entire time. It wasn't till. Um, seven one six eight owner. Uh, began to build without permits. And she believed that we somehow turned her in rather than it just was the city that did it. Um, as a result of that. Uh, Ms. Hubbard became angry and and didn't allow us to come in and continue to cut the foliage. To the hedge line. Um, she also planted some illegal Christmas trees that were above the. The the height restriction. Um, she believed that we turned her in for that as well. We did not. We did not do either one of the two. We've lived peacefully, just want to maintain our our view. Um, and cut the foliage that you can clearly see in the photographs that has gone above the hedge. I'll I'll reserve the rest.
Okay, uh, do we have another speaker? Craig, your hands up. Do we have another? Speaker?
We do. Our next, um, at the moment, I don't see the foliage owner present in the meeting. If you are present in the meeting under a different identity than your name. If you could click the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen so that we can spot you. And otherwise, um, we'll move on to Joe Drummond.
Rebecca, sorry to interrupt. If the foliage owner does does appear and and do you want to speak? Uh, Chair Mazza, because this is kind of quasi judicial, it would be advisable to give them fifteen minutes as well. Albeit they don't, they, you know, no right of rebuttal or 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 anything like that, but as I said, that's just to the foliage owner.
Now, can you explain again why that is? Because we haven't done that in the past.
Yeah, because I mean, this is, you know, I I I, you know, I don't want to. Put words in in into the mouths of 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 any of the neighbors. It is somewhat adversarial. I.e. we have a and a a claimant here saying my 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 view, you know, has been impeded. Here is my evidence for it. If the if the foliage owner is here and he or she wants to say this is why that claim is wrong. I would think, yes, I I I am advising to give them equal amount of time. So there's no claim or allegation by the foliage owner that, hey, I didn't get a fair shake. I would have. Made my case much better if I if I if I had more time, particularly too, because. Any potential order, when at this point, it is just potential, would kind of be directed towards them and 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 direct them to to kind of take an action. So I get it. It is a bit different between, hey, you have a project applicant and you have various kind of project opponents. I get it, but 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 that that is my advice tonight, Chair, uh, Vice Chair Mazza.
And uh, let me get this right. The applicant. Has the fifteen minute rebuttal uh with rebuttal and. The foliage owner only has the fifteen minutes, no rebuttal, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And at this time, um, I'm not seeing any indication that Barbara Hubbard Spence is present in the meeting. I did just email her the Zoom link again in case she did not spot that. Um, but I, I mean, I don't make phone calls during planning commission meetings, so I don't. I I think at this point, we move on to Joe Drummond and see if um. Barbara Spence joins the meeting or not.
Okay, Joe, uh, you're up.
Hi, thanks so much. We actually just went through this, almost came to you for. Uh, a property across on on inland lane from Pedro Chica that we had been working since two thousand and fifteen. To try and get them to trim their trees. They were new owners and. Um, finally, through mediation, we managed to um. To through Tyler, he was very helpful, to um get the view preservation permit. Through mediation, not having to go to you guys, but I do hope that you will grant this view preservation permit because it is. Like, I mean, you you constantly, you're friendly with them, you ask them, and then you have to go through this. Four-step process. It's very tedious and. It's very time consuming and, you know, our views are precious to us here in Malibu and. It's it's all about our property values and our enjoyment of our property and she's obviously. Belligerent and not being a good neighbor, so I don't. I don't know. I just I feel for these guys and. Um. I know that uh. It's just very difficult to have conflict with your neighbors, so if if I think they try to resolve it and she's not even here. So I think you should just grant the view preservation permit and. And hopefully she'll clear it. I mean, I don't even know if she will, and I know the cost will be to. The the claimants will have to pay and they've been paying all along, but now, but once this is finalized, she'll have to maintain it. And she'll have to pay for it, so they don't have to pay for it anymore, which is a good thing, because they shouldn't have been paying for someone else's foliage to be trimmed, so. It's all for fire safety too and everything else, so I hope that you will grant the view preservation permit. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
If anyone else present in the meeting would like to speak on this item, please indicate so by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Yeah, I've seen none.
Okay, I'm closing the public hearing, opening it for discussion. Craig?
Yeah, thank you. Um, let me lower my hand. Yeah, just to clarify, um, this is not an application for a. PVD. They've had a PVD for a decade here. This is to request corrective action on that existing PVD. And also, I I I wouldn't want to describe the uh. Person here as obviously belligerent. I think what we're looking at here is that. Um, Ms. Hubbard Spence left a handwritten note in September twenty twenty. Explaining that her father had died uh the previous week and that she needed time to grieve. And uh, I think in that circumstance, some short delay would have been understandable. Under the circumstances, but I, you know. By now, those trees should she should have gone to those trees much sooner than this. So uh, I'd like to commend the city for following this up. This is exactly the kind of enforcement action that a lot of people in the community have been making noise about wanting more of. So it's good to see it happening here. And I would I would make a motion with a condition. Um, that we. Require the corrective action. Um, and that we also put in a clause, this would be the additional condition. That the foliage must be trimmed annually to comply with the view after uh, to to maintain that. Uh, condition.
I'll second that and uh. Just make a comment on on Craig's amendment is. I've looked at four or five of these. Um, ordinances by cities. And the one thing and the one thing that's lacking in our ordinance is. Unless you have. A period when it has to be re-trimmed. Everybody has to come back. Through the whole process again. To fix it. And so every ordinance I know of. Requires an annual or semi-annual trim. Uh. At the expense of. The foliage owner. The original trim is at the expense of the applicant. And then the subsequent trims are at the expense of the foliage owner to maintain and. Our resolution says, including maintenance. All that's adding in this. Particular situation is adding. When maintenance has to be performed, because it's an it's an amorphous term. You can maintain it every year or every decade. Um. So that makes it certain and keeps it from coming back to the city count, uh, the planning commission. And this is a tedious process going. You have to hire mediators, you have to pay all the fees, you have to. Do all kinds of stuff to get to our point. That's why I think it's never come to us before. So uh. I I'm going to second Craig's motion and 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 uh.
Well, you and you've mod- you've modified it slightly, but.
I I didn't, what did you? I I didn't mean to.
Well, you know, you just said that that the. Who has to pay for it when?
I I believe that's in the law.
That's in the, that's in the statute.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I I I do have a. A a comment. I'm going to support the motion, but there's there's um. Yeah, something for for maybe said staff should be aware of. I I I'm aware of another situation where. Um, the process went forward, the request for mediation, the request for arbitration, so on and so on. And finally, it it wore fruit and people were able to sit down and they agreed that it would be. Uh, uh. Done on a certain basis, but they never reduced it to writing and they never brought it back to the city. And so when a new owner took over the next house, the foliage owner's house. Um, the process essentially had to be done all over again and and so. Um, I I guess I just want to warn people that if you if you get down the road. Uh, and and you're at a point where you reach an agreement. Write it down, take it to the city so that it can be put into some sort of enforceable form in the future. When a new owner owns the property or when somebody changes their mind or whatever. That's my way of coming.
So that's a that's a good thought, and I guess the question is, does this action that we would be taking, this runs with the property, right? It doesn't attach to the owner per se.
As I remember, the law runs with the property.
Yeah.
Yes, and just to um, just to. Follow up on Commissioner Jennings' uh comment. Um, yes, there is a process that the planning director can memorialize these if if an agreement is made in in one of these, you know. Finding arbitration or mediation period. So actually, for the one that Joe Drummond mentioned, we'll we'll be we'll be memorializing that one uh with the planning director.
Now, I just want to suggest that. In the two ordinances I I know pretty well. Uh, the. Planning staff. Came and verified. The uh. View determination. At the end of the. Trim, so. That view determination. Helped. Uh, because it's already, it's part of this process. So uh, that's just an administrative thing, but. And I would assume it's up to you to make sure that our action is followed through. And that that's the only thing that other cities do. They actually come out and take another picture. And make sure it's it's right. So any other discussion, Jeff, do you want to have a discussion? Jeff?
Oh, and then Vice Chair, I just want to make sure that I I have the exact language from Commissioner Hill is is would now be a good time, or you want me to hold off on that?
Yeah, that's a good time. We're going to take a vote because nobody else wants to discuss.
Okay, so so Tyler, interrupt me if I'm wrong here. It'd be section five, conditions of approval. Subparagraph two, it's a short one, so I'll I'll read it. The foliage located at seven one six eight Birdview Avenue that blocks ocean views documented in PVD number twelve dash twenty two one five. Must be trimmed and maintained to be no taller than the hedge line. Here's where I'm adding language. On at least an annual basis, comma, as shown in PVD number twelve dash two one five separating seven one six eight and seven one seven zero Birdview Ave.
That sounds good. Um, I just to clarify what John just said, is it in the. Uh, statute already that they that you guys have to come back and take the documentary photo after the fact, or is that another condition to add?
I would think that that's just normal procedure. I mean, when you approve a house, you go out and see if it's what what you approved, the one that's all done. Um, but that's, I don't know.
It's a Richard, I I mean, so we do have some language in there. Now, of course, there is always. Issues with the foliage owner, excuse me, the claimant letting us on. issues with the foliage owner, excuse me, the claimant letting us on the property. Once again, I have no reason to believe why they would, but I would be hesitant to, to mandate any staff action. We can of course say, hey, staff work with them, but we don't want to say staff, you must go take these pictures. For whatever reason, sometimes property owners, they sell the house, they just don't want city, city staff on their property and they refuse. And so there, we would kind of be faced with staff looking at a explicit directive and a condition from a plant, from the planning commission and basically having to yeah, I, I don't know what that would look like, an inspection warrant, but not really an inspection of their house. So I would, I, I get the point. I get it. If you want to add a condition about using best efforts to, to ensure, I'm fine with that. But if it's explicit saying staff must on an annual basis, take a picture from the PVD original, I would probably advise against that just because you could run into issues.
Patrick, that's not what I was suggesting. You go out and take picture every year. They just, they just No, we do this, by the way, we do this all the time. We, we say staff shall inspect after five years. After one year, we do it on, all the time on commercial properties, you know. Whether it works or not, I don't know. That's what it says on Nobu, you know, and a lot of other places. But we do that all the time. Now, can a commercial property owner not let you come in and see if you're following your CUP? I guess they can stand there with a shotgun, but you can pull their CUP for not letting you check, I guess. So I'm not saying go out every year and take a picture. I'm saying that it's normal for the staff, and Richard, you comment on this, to make sure when it says you shall do this, the staff comes back and sees if you've done what the planning commission said at some point.
Pat, I think to your point that yes, we do that, but typically the property owner i- i- is the, is the applicant. And I, and I, and, and so with this one, I think, you know, I'm sure the longos would go along with letting us go on to their property on, on a regular occurrence. I'm assuming they're, they're here, we, they, they could give us that. But I'm a little concerned about how we could follow up if we need cooperation from the neighbor. As, as Patrick was getting, alluding to.
Right. And so I mean, I, I, I'm not saying that it's impossible. We have code enforcement mechanisms. As we said, we have kind of the, 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 a larger option of, of going to a court to say, hey, this is why we need to go there. Once again, I, I think it's a bit, I don't want to say premature, but, but it's just so hard to predict with any level of certainty the exact enforcement mechanism we may or may not need, or maybe if we even want to in terms of maybe city staff resources, budgets, all of a sudden it says, hey, we don't, we, we may, may not have the ability and or resources to, to do so. So if, if the, if the concern is that, you know, follow up on this, and once again, I, I don't want to speak for the, for the claiming here. I assume the, the, the longos will very much be in, in, you know, in contact with, with our office and, and Richard's office. If something goes askew, if, if, if any direction tonight is not followed, if in two years, it's, they're overgrown again. I'm personally not worried, but once again, you guys are the, you know, ultimate city decision makers, not us. So if there's, you know, if, 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 if that's a grave concern, I, I would be fine with directing staff to use all best and reasonable efforts to ensure compliance and, 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 and potentially leave it at that.
Craig, you're blocked. You made it, Craig.
What I imagine it happening would be this, after a year goes by and, and shrubbery isn't cut, the longos in this case would take a picture themselves saying, look, they would send it to the city, the city code enforcement would come out and then for any further enforcement action, you would have, the city would have to take their own picture at that point, right? Or do you just rely on the longos picture?
I won't, I mean, I won't, I won't speak for, for, for Doug Clevinger or, or Richard, but I mean, there, I, I'm not aware of any super specific thing that we must go out there and take the picture ourselves. Now, of course, if there's any allegation that it was doctored, we have reason to believe that it was doctored or messed up. We would of course can, you know, verify that. But if we have a, you know, if we have a picture of something and, and, and the, in this instance, the foliage owner is not debating and not contesting whether that's, that's an accurate picture or not, I'm not sure that we have to go out there and take our own.
So the longos photo might be reliable enough.
Correct. I mean, it would be somewhat of a, this is just speaking from experience. Hopefully it's smooth. It would be somewhat of a, of a back and forth. Say, hey, you know, we'd send it to the, to the neighbor. What's going on here? If they said, you know, hey, they took that last week, the guy just came and trimmed it this week, you know, there'd be kind of be that type of process. So it wouldn't be, it's not instantaneous. Tyler, Tyler wouldn't be out there twenty-four hours later with his shears cutting, cutting it down.
Oh, Craig, that's the way it works with the other ordinances. It's up to the view owner to, to complain that it's not been complied with. Now, the reason you say we put in there one year is because that makes it mandatory that compliance requires at least a trim once a year. Whereas they could say, you never told me when to trim it. And, and you'd have nothing in, in writing. The, the basic view determination made in two thousand and thirteen is what we're affirming here. That's the picture that counts. Okay. And the staff can go out and say, it's not even close. Come on, guys. You're violating the planning commission action on October third.
Right. Good point.
And enforce it because we, we've put in, that's what the ordinance was written for. So we don't need other, anything other than complaintant to enforce. Whereas as Jeff said, you get these side deals that aren't recorded. City can't enforce those. They don't have nothing to go base it on. Whereas in this case, they've gone all the way to us. We've determined and the two thousand thirteen pictures sold. That's what we voted on. Have we voted? Is there any other discussion? Can we take a vote?
Well, I, I have a, I have a comment or question.
Yeah, yes.
The, do we have, do we need to be worried about who does the work? I mean, we know that the, the, the claimant, the view owner is supposed to pay for the first trim and it's subsequently the foliage owner's responsibility to pay after that, but do we envision a problem with, you know, who decides who the contractor is going to be to, to do the trim? I mean, I could see a situation where you know, it's up to the, the view owner to pay and the foliage owner says, well, we'll use my guy. And then, you know, they're presented with a bill that's, you know, ten times higher than it should be.
Let me give you how another city does it. They have a commission. They determine what the view is. Same as us basically. And they put out a resolution. And the foliage owner is required to follow that resolution and have it trimmed. But the foliage, the view owner has to pay. So in that case, the view owner has the choice paying the lowest or any one of the three they want to pick. They can pay more for a better trimmer, okay? The basic view is still guaranteed. So that, that eliminates the fact that somebody could come in and say, well, I want a better view. Mike is crazy. Well, he gets to grow them back to where they were in two, no matter what.
I, I think, John, I, I, I think I think that Mark's concern is that the foliage owner hires a crew of lightly employed lawyers to go out with nail clippers and to clip it down and bills on an hourly basis. And then the view owner is stuck with an enormous bill for what could have been handled much more efficiently if they were being realistic about it. So it, it is a problem. It's a problem of, of you can, I've done these agreements before and you can detail it any way you want to. You can have one guy agree to pay, but the other guy gets to choose who does the cutting or the guy who, who pays gets to choose the guy who's cutting. There's, there's any number of ways to handle the problem, but it is a problem.
We could specify, we could specify that the view owner pays the first cutting and can, if, if the foliage owner picks a contractor at a certain price, he can, he can hire another contractor
So I can kind of, and, and sorry, I mean to interrupt Vice Chair Mazza and Commissioner Wett, I, I, I don't mean to put, put words in your mouth, but your, your, your one concern there is very good in terms of as, as, you know, Commissioner Jennings, you know, lightly employed attorneys using nail clippers, run it up. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I could see the other side of that same coin too of, hey, if we, if we allow the view, the, the applicant, maybe they say, make sure you're there at seven in the morning, bring as loud as you can. So, and once again, we've never gone through this, so we don't have a long history of processes and, and things like that. I would of course be hopeful that the, you know, the neighbors, I, I know the, 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 the claimant tonight did speak highly, or at least, you know, in, in respectful tones. Hey, there's an issue here, but for the most part, they, they, they lived in harmony. That being said, we, we could add a condition. Once again, the city probably would never want to get involved to enforce this because there's a whole host of reasons, but basically say the party shall use best and reasonable efforts to select a effect, a effective and cost reasonable contractor to do the initial work. And at the very least, there's some genuflection to, hey, you as foliage owner, you can't use this as a way to get back at your neighbor for maybe any perceived wrongs. And then vice versa, you as the, as the applicant, you know, claimant, you don't get to make the call either and you can, you know, get the loudest chainsaw that you can potentially find and, and, and say, hey, cut one branch at a time as loud as you can to kind of make it, you know, you know, not enjoyable. But once again, we, we, we don't really want to get involved in that. We don't want to dictate who goes out there. That's all kinds of issues with liability there in case something goes wrong. So your point's well taken. That, that would be my suggestion, but once again, it's, it's, it's up to you all.
Yeah.
In the view restoration part of, part of this ordinance, it seems to me that, that there are restrictions on the manner and extent to which you can cut. You can't damage the tree, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't, I mean, a- again, it's another, a, a, another aspect of the problem. If the guy's got you know, bushes that he is, he is raised from a puppy, whatever, you, you don't want somebody coming in and just clear cutting the thing and, you know, with, with one chainsaw. You have to, you have to have some recognition that they can't by cutting destroy the plant. And this is, you know, it, it, it's, it, this is a this is a hugely complicated area and we, we fought over this during the time that, that the ordinance was being discussed. And it, it came out of compromise, but there are these, these serious issues that need to be addressed. And I think that we have two choices. We can address them in this resolution or try to regress them all in the resolution, or we can say, we can go pretty much with what staff has written and as Craig has suggested, be amended and then see how it goes. If we have problems, we may have to get back and, and resolve further disputes. But I, I, I probably think that's a better idea than us sitting down and trying to specify the exact details of who's going to do what to whom.
What about if we, if we added a condition that the foliage owner provides the, 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 the view owner with three bids and the view owner is allowed to pick which contractor they, they go with on that initial.
That's a good idea and it's on city. The other thing that's done in that city to, to make sure they don't butcher the trees is they require certified
Arborist.
Arborist, okay? Which there are guys that do that. They also, the one provision that, that all the cities have is coastal commission has these rules about, these are coastal cities, has these rules about birds. And so if the trim comes during the mating season or whatever it is, nesting season, they have to certify that there are no birds getting whacked.
Right.
Or whatever they say. Those are reasonable provisions. They work in other cities and I think you have a good idea. So I, I would like to, Craig, if I could make an amendment, I'd like to amend it saying that the foliage owner can pick three different certified did you say botanist? And the foliage, the, uh, view owner can pick which one they want to use. And the arborist must certify that they are not violating any coastal provisions against birds or for birds or whatever it is.
I'll, I'll accept some of that and reject some of it. I, I think it's important to, to specify that it be a certified arborist. I don't like the idea of requiring the three bids or I think, I think if you judiciously placed reasonable or a couple of them here would go a long way. That if, if, you know, that, 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 I think Patrick said it'd be reasonable cost, reasonable something that you know, if somebody then really has it out for somebody else and we're, we're talking about a broader situation, not necessarily just this one case, but we're kind of laying some groundwork for the future too. Then, then at least they can, could take it to a court and say, yeah, this was not reasonable.
Yeah, but Craig, the reason why I would not like to change that because reasonable is a big term.
It is, it is.
Yes, no, this specific ordinance is a city ordinance designed to keep people from going to court, having to go to court.
I wouldn't want to require that they provide three bids.
Why not?
It just seems like a lot of extra busy work if, if, if they could just get it done.
Get a guy.
And, and, and those three bids.
Thousand dollars and another guy's going to charge three.
Well, they could go out and get three twelve thousand dollar bids and hand them to the applicant. It, it doesn't see, it doesn't seem like it would really solve a problem to get three. Just say reasonable.
And, 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 and once again, and Tyler, I, I'm not sure if you know this, and once again, I, I understand the desire and, and we want to make sure that, that people doing the work are qualified. And then as Vice Chair Mazza said, I know we said certified arborist. Are, are, are we? And maybe it's just, are, are we entirely a thousand percent sure that is undoubtedly needed? We include it in there. We can just say as necessary.
Tell you is, next week I'm hiring a certified arborist to trim my bushes in Laguna because I'm required to. And it's a minor job, okay?
And once in that, I, I, I don't doubt the veracity of that. And once again, I'm not saying to remove it. I'm just saying if the, if the idea here is to ensure that this gets done in a reasonable, cost-effective manner, I don't think we want to add any additional conditions that may provide more cost, more confusion and kind of more potential issues about can you get your arborist here today, tomorrow, he or she is out of town this week, come back later. Once again, i- i- if a certified arborist is necessary, I apologize for bringing this up more. That's, that's totally fine. I just want to make sure we don't condition work on a certified arborist that may not necessarily need one.
Well, see, the problem, the problem, and this is the reason why these Laguna did it, is you can go out and hire some guy with a chainsaw, you pick up on the corner and an arborist has got a license. And so they say, okay, first, this is the first time. It doesn't have to be every time, the first time. Because after that, it's up to the foliage owner to do it himself. And they can pick whoever they feel like. But the first time, you know, when you're taking out the big chunk, you got to hire a certified arborist because you have recourse. And the city doesn't get involved in lawsuits. They, they try not to. So you avoid, on the first cut is the only time we care about unless there's a violation, it's obvious. And they're not, they're out there all over the place because that's what they do. They cut trees and they don't kill them.
How about this?
For example, you go in and whack some guy's tree, like he, he's got some kind of rare tree and you kill it.
So the code does speak to this. Do you want me to read it, Patrick?
Absolutely, Tyler.
Yeah, so seventeen, MMC seventeen point four five point one two oh, there's kind of four things that says need to take place with the restorative, restorative action. Says the minimum restorative action shall be required to preserve the claimant's view. Restorative action on future stump growth. Uh, restorative action on future stump growth, all restor- all restorative actions shall be conducted in compliance with California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Fishing game or US Fish and Wildlife Policies or Bicarary Bird Treaty Act, there's a lot more language there, but kind of what Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Mazza was saying about. Protecting the birds and then D says. The claimant and foliage owner shall make arrangements regarding access to the foliage owner's property for restoration action. The claimant shall, shall select a certified arborist to perform the restorative action and subsequent maintenance. Unless the foliage owner prefers to select the arborist, if the foliage owner selects the arborist. The foliage owner shall pay the claimant the difference between the fee charged by the claimant's arborist and the foliage owner's arborist. Unless a different allocation of costs is required by this chapter or by mutual agreement of the parties.
Okay, that sounds like it covers it pretty well.
Language of the Laguna law, I don't know where they.
Wants is to add, add that exact language as a condition.
Well, it's already in there.
It's already in the laws.
It's in the, it's in the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if there's called to include the phrase that Patrick brought out a moment ago. That it, the work be performed in a reasonable, cost-effective manner.
I think we should be very careful changing an ordinance that City Council passed.
Okay.
I mean, I really do.
I agree with John.
So we're back to, we're back to my motion that, that it be done every year and with no further ex- additions and modifications, right? Alright.
Um, Commissioner Hill?
Uh, yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you for going back to the code on that, that was uh.
Yeah, that was a favor.
Okay, now we're on a, a long one, uh, do we want to take a break or not?
Um, before you make a decision on recess, I do want to just mention that if you should have questions for our city biologist. She does need to leave the meeting at nine thirty PM and that would be related to the next item on the agenda, um, the Caltrans project at Solstice Creek.
Uh, our city biologist i- isn't the, isn't this the?
Caltrans will have their environmental specialists available during the meeting to respond to questions as well. Our city biologist needs to leave the meeting at nine thirty PM.
Okay, do we have jurisdiction over biology in this or is it Caltrans? Uh, and fishing game?
Courtney conducted a review and also led the environmental review board meeting on this item.
I have a question that the, the, the city biologist might be helpful on.
Okay, well, uh, Patrick, can we? Open the hearing to hear the city biologist, close it, take a break and come back and hear nothing else?
I mean, we can, we, we can take a recess kind of anytime w- we want, typically, we don't, we try not to do that. In between, you know, in the middle of a, of a meeting and I don't necessarily think that we would necessarily have to open the public hearing, we can just get that staff report and. And, and, and Commissioner Hill can ask the questions of the, of the city biologist um and kind of go from there, so. I'm not sure if there's much efficacy in doing that now and then taking a break or taking a break now and, and just doing that at the beginning, but that's, that's kind of my reading on it.
All right, let me ask uh, whoever's going to lead this, Adam, how long will it take to get a staff report?
Uh, my presentation will only take a few minutes.
Okay, then I, I think we should open the meeting, hear Adam's presentation, have questions of the city biologist. And then we'll take a break and reopen the meeting for public comment, et cetera. Does, do, do, there, you agree with that? Okay, so we're going to open the meeting um and get a staff report from Adam.
And do we want to do uh, d- disclosures first?
Oh, disclosures. Anybody, any, well, let's do disclosures, Craig?
None.
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 I, I was involved in the uh. Bo revage attempt to have a. Uh, bed breakfast on the property and there was a lot of discussion about Escher, so that's the only thing I know that isn't in the staff report. And that was probably what fifteen years ago, so that's my disclosure, okay, may we have a staff report?
Hey, uh, good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners, the project before you is coastal development permit number twenty dash zero six two. And variance number twenty one dash zero one eight at two six zero five, two six zero three eight point five Pacific Coast Highway. Uh, so the project is to replace an existing twenty-two foot wide bridge in culvert with a new thirty foot wide bridge. With an underlying natural slope creek bottom, uh, which is designed to improve the riparian habitat to restore a fish passage for the endangered. Southern steelhead trout, uh, and this also includes a pedestrian walkway, uh, providing public access under the proposed bridge to Dan Blocker Beach. Uh, this is known as location ten, uh, the project also uh includes a replacement of an existing culvert. Uh, to join a new culvert with an existing Caltrans drainage outlet, this is referred to as location eleven. And uh, there's associated habitat mitigation and restoration at location ten, Solstice Creek Bridge, next slide please. Uh, and the variance request uh is related to location ten Solstice Creek Bridge for retaining walls over six feet in height. Next slide please. Uh, here we have an aerial view of both location ten and eleven, uh, also with the Esha boundaries, which I will uh touch on in a few slides. Uh, but just to give you a sense of the project area. Next slide. Uh, here we have location eleven, just a zoomed in look at the proposed work here, uh, you can see there's the exist, two existing drainage uh inlets. And the proposed culvert to uh link them and uh they feed to an existing head wall, which is to remain. Next slide please. Uh, so as it relates to um, location ten Solstice Creek Bridge, uh, the city biologist has made the determination that this is a permitted activity. Uh, within Esha, um, it's a permitted use in wetlands as it meets the criteria of incidence of public service, public services. Uh, it's permitted use in streams as it involves flood protection and habitat restoration. And uh, it's permitted, it's a permitted use within Esha buffers as it involves habitat restoration. And will include removal of invasive plant species. Uh, and given that this project required an initial study, uh, it went before the environmental review board in May. Uh, and they had the following recommendations uh for pre-construction surveys for the silvery legless lizard. Monarch butterflies and shot hole boar, uh, to reduce and or eliminate impacts to heritage trees if possible. And to plant uh the new trees that they're proposing on a uh National Park Service parcel, which is north of the project area. Next slide please. Uh, here's just a, a quick view of an engineering plan for uh Solstice Creek Bridge, please keep in mind that Caltrans uh inverts their plans, so. Um, north is at the bottom of the plan sheet, so the beach is at the, at the top. Next slide please. And here we just have a section view of the proposed uh bridge and new natural slope creek bottom, along with the pedestrian bridge uh on the left-hand side. Pedestrian walkway, excuse me. Next slide please. Uh, so this project was part of uh a few drainage improvement projects going on within. Malibu as well as Ventura County and some south of Malibu. And uh, overall, the initial study found uh has a finding of no significant impact and, and make a negative declaration. Uh, with a no effect and less than significant effects finding. Next slide please. And uh, along with this project includes a habitat mitigation and monitoring plan. Uh, to mitigate the impacts associated with the construction of the bridge and the uh new uh slope creek bottom. And this gives you just a quick sense of uh the impacts, uh, the areas that are, will be impacted uh due to the construction. And some staff recommends that the planning commission finds that the proposed project is consistent with the initial study and then to get a negative declaration. And approves the proposed project as conditioned. And we have the uh team from Caltrans uh available to answer any questions. And I believe we also have the uh city coastal engineer, city biologist, and I believe Public Works uh available to answer any questions as well. Uh, Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong on any of those.
That is correct, um, but perhaps at this time you'd like to direct any questions you have for the city biologists.
Okay, yes, John, uh, I need to amend my um. My ex parte declaration, I need to disclose that um. Several years ago, I represented uh the forge, Danielle and Luciana Forge, uh, when Caltrans uh. Acquired the property uh on the north side of the Pacific Coast Highway by eminent domain. And negotiated the settlement of, of, of that action, so.
Okay, uh, that leads me to Patrick, is this? A conflict that um. Requires Jeff to recuse himself.
Um, uh, uh, apologies, uh, Commissioner Jennings, you said it was many years ago, the, the FPPC rule is. At least five hundred dollars within the last twelve months of the decision?
It was, no, it was, it was a lot longer than twelve months ago.
Okay. Okay, so uh, this portion of the hearing is going to be directed to questions only to the city biologist. Uh, from uh members of the uh commission, Craig?
Yeah, good, um, couple of questions, um. The ERB made several recommendations, we saw some of them on the screen, not all of them. Two of them were not accepted by Caltrans and I just wondered if the city biologist could give. Her perspective on why that would have been, I'm sure we'll he- hear it from Caltrans too, but one of them was to reduce and or eliminate any impact to heritage trees. And the other was to plant new trees proposed within the habitat mitigation monitoring plan on the NPS parcel further north within. Uh, Solstice Canyon, Caltrans said no to that, what, what, what's the city biologist's perspective on why that would be?
Sure, um, and Adam, please help me out if I'm um misspeaking, this was from the ERB meeting. And this is to the best of my knowledge, so this should also be answered by Caltrans, but um, from what I understand, the heritage trees, um, they will do their best. To um reduce or eliminate any impacts, but from my understanding, they are located in an area. Um, such that they are not able to go around them or, um, you know, avoid them at, at all, is that correct, Adam? That's what I got from the meeting.
That's my understanding as well, and we can, we have the uh Caltrans biologist on hand as well if we can provide more detail.
Well, we, we can get to that when we reopen, but just to be clear, you just said that their, their take is that they do need to damage heritage trees?
That is my, that was my understanding.
And with regard to planting trees in uh the Solstice NPS parcel, what, why wouldn't they do that?
Um, so I encourage them to um, to seek that out as well, um, they. Um, from, again, this is from what I remember, um, they have gotten so far down the line, um, planning this project that they. Uh, you know, in order to uh plant these trees in a new parcel and to get agreements with NPS and the various permits that they would need in order to conduct this work. Um, they're afraid that they're not going to be able to do it within the timeline of their budget and maybe um other things that are out of. My control that are in Caltrans control, Adam, did I speak to that properly?
Uh, yeah, and I'll just add that uh my understanding is that they've already had lengthy discussions with MRCA in terms of. Appropriate locations to plant the trees that are meant to be mitigation, so they already have a location in mind. And uh, they've already gone through extensive discussions regarding that location, so this recommendation from the ERB came at. At late stages and they wouldn't be able to undo uh what they've already decided upon.
Okay, my last question then is, we're proposing basically a fish ladder here and also people walking in the, the tunnel, is that? That, that seems like a conflicting use to have pedestrians and fish. And I see that the pedestrian walkway is elevated, but nonetheless, uh, are there concerns about having them in the same space?
Um, not from my understanding, so I've seen this in other parts of the Santa Monica Mountains, um, like the Lost Virginus River, I've, I've seen that over in, in that. Area where they have created kind of like a, a fish ladder and um, you know, an area specific for amphibians and. There is pedestrian access um all through there, it's um, from what I have seen and um noticed, it hasn't been. Uh detrimental, but um, that wasn't necessarily considered during ERBs, that would be a new topic of discussion, I suppose.
Alright, thank you, that, those are my, that, that I can think of right off the top of my, or not off the top, but anyway, those are mine for now.
Yeah, I will follow on, on, on Craig's question, Adam, could you put up a slide ten? Is that possible?
Uh, Alex.
Yes, uh, I was looking at everything upside down, the, there's like a green. Looks like uh you turn out of the highway. Before the corner and there's a green area that goes down to the, through the Esha. Um, it looks like maybe it's a walkway or something, is that? Is that a walkway, is that an entrance?
Yeah, that's correct, that, uh, the bright green line alongside the roadway, um, that is. That's the uh pedestrian walkway that leads down to the walkway underneath the bridge.
Pedestrian walkway is along the. East side of the uh, the tunnel, it's only on one side. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct, the east side.
Now, my question to the biologist is the area all around that is Esha. So when you walk down that walkway, can you access that Esha and do you access that Esha?
That would be, I think, a question more proper for Caltrans, um, I would have to review the. Project plans quickly, um, in order to answer that properly.
I'll ask them, but there is no, there's provision in the coastal act for trails. In Esha for the public, now. Next to the uh, next to that is uh, what is supposed to be a restaurant, I don't know what it is now, um. And there's Esha all surrounding it, there's no trail across that Esha into the river.
So today, Vice Chair Mazza, there is a pathway. Adam, we don't have a, an, an existing and proposed, do we?
Uh, no, I don't think we do.
There is a pathway there uh that takes you down to the, the creek bed and then. That's how folks have been accessing the area and walking under Pacific Coast Highway and then going out to the beach, there are steps there.
But they aren't legal either, they're crossing, uh, uh, they're crossing an Esha from a private. Uh, private use instead of public use.
They look like something somebody made many moons ago and have just existed, I know we, we stopped them when they wanted to make it larger. Uh, but Craig, I, and I don't have the permitting history in front of me, I know they've been there and this project would. End up turning all of that into a, a, a formal pedestrian walkway uh to access the. The undercrossing walkway.
So they would not be able to walk in the stream, this is my question, um. Yeah, I, I, the reason I'm asking this, I've, I've had neighbors in the area contact me saying, we don't want a homeless camp. Uh, are we going to, is it planned and is it in the biological studies? To allow human beings in the riverbed?
So, Adam. Uh, jump in here if I misspeak, but what I see in looking at the plans is that you walk down the walkway. And it takes you to that pedestrian, uh, not bridge, but that elevated platform. And you walk along that, and do you have any pictures or, or plans to show? Or a cross-reference we can do in the plan that shows a physical barrier? So that when folks are on that walkway, they can't jump off into the creek?
I, I'm not, that's not really what I'm worried about, because those people will. The people that are the public will be able to walk down the walkway and cross, cross under the bridge, um. I'm wondering about the people in the commercial area that's not public. Crossing the, this is from the biologist, crossing the um, Esha. To access the riverbed. And of course, coastal act says you can't do that, so, um. I'm just wondering, are there two pathways to the beach, one for the private people, one for the public people, and does that interfere with the fish? That's the question. That's the question. If you had a homeless camp down there or. You know, a bunch of people tripping down the river. Which from my. Pictures of the river in the staff report, it looks like you could get killed down there pretty easily if it rained, but. You know, there's a bunch of debris and stuff. Is there any provision? For people being able to use the riverbed itself to to walk and has that been considered? By the environmental study, that's my question.
My understanding is no, that the the point of the elevated pedestrian walkways to keep pedestrians away from the river. Whether they are still. Able to access the river. I'm sorry, I just want to. Get clarity on on the question.
Yeah, because I noticed on one of the plans for Caltrans, it says they acquired the river. There's a red. Box that shows some, they own the river and the land around it.
Yeah, they acquired that piece. During the the planning and design stages of this project. In order for them to. Make the necessary habitat restoration items that they have planned here and as well as to put in the pedestrian bridge there and have. More or less full control over the area.
So if we got. If we were concerned about. The environment of the stream. They could be required to put a fence to keep people out of the stream. Because they own it, correct?
I'm sorry, it could be required.
To not allow access across their property into the stream.
I would, I would want Caltrans to weigh in on on their experience doing this because I know they they have done this on other projects and. To see how that that's been handled in the past.
Then my last question, so the. The biologist can leave is. Has any study been made on human access to the stream bed? And what its effects are?
Not from my knowledge.
Okay, thank you very much, anybody else have any other questions? Okay, we're gonna take a. Is seven minutes long enough? Seven minute break until. Nine thirty-five. See you then, don't talk to anybody, turn off your whatever. Okay, do we have everybody? Let's see, Craig. Yes, we do.
We do.
Okay, I'm calling the meeting back to order, this is item five B. Two six oh eight three eight point five and two six oh three oh Pacific Coast Highway. Okay. Do we want? Any question, any further questions, I'm going to open it up to the. To the applicant and the public. Okay. I hope you can hear me, I don't hear anybody back. So. We're opening the. The. Public portion of the meeting, it's the applicant. Has fifteen minutes, I assume you have a group.
So Ryan Todaro will be representing the applicant team and will introduce to you the specialists that he has available to provide input this evening.
Okay, Ryan, where, obviously this is a complicated issue, you have fifteen minutes, you can save any time for rebuttal, but we will. Probably have. Questions of you. That will not count against your time. So you may continue at any time you want and. Go ahead.
Sure, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Yeah, great. My name is Ryan Todaro, as Adam mentioned, and Rebecca, I'm a consultant for the state of California for Caltrans. Helping with the coastal element permit process for this project. We also have Nancy P from Caltrans, she's the project manager. And she can answer any questions in regards to the design of the project. We also have Tony Bakarian, who's the Caltrans environmental planner, he's the lead planner for this project. And can answer environmental questions as well, and then we also have Peter Champion, who's the Caltrans biologist, so any biology questions can be directed his way. Nancy, do we have any other Caltrans staff on? The meeting as well?
No, that's it, it's just three of us, we should be able to answer any question the commissioner have, thank you.
Okay. So. Yeah, we have several people here that can answer any questions that you have, we don't have a formal presentation prepared, Adam went through the presentation. And we're here to answer any questions that the planning commission might have.
Okay, we'll reserve fourteen minutes approximately for you now, do we have any other speakers tonight?
There's no one else who signed up in advance, if there's anyone present in the meeting who wishes to provide public comment, you may indicate so by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
Do we have any public?
Nancy, none.
None, okay, we're gonna start off with Craig, I guess.
Yeah, just, I I have a few more questions, but just to follow up on what I had asked of the biologist about the heritage trees. It sounds like you guys are saying that you really do have to cut some, could you elaborate on that? How much, why, etc., thanks.
I'd like Nancy and or Peter to answer that question, this is Ryan Todaro, thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, would you take this one, please, sorry? Can, can you unmute Peter? C, that's.
Okay, I'm sorry, there were some issues, I'm getting unmuted, thank you. Yeah, I can. I can address that, so. There are several trees around the, the. The project site that will have to be removed. Some sycamore trees as well as an oak tree as well, we, we looked very closely at. You know, could we work around them or avoid them in some fashion? Originally, we were, we were trying to particularly avoid the oak tree unfortunately. Due to. Some of the high water velocities that required. Some armoring on the upstream side, that was not possible.
Okay, thank you, and I guess so. One other question before I yield to other peoples for a bit. This is maybe more even for. Adam, but. The Arts Commission is planning some artwork in here, and if I recall correctly, they were talking about some sort of mural or art on the east side of the tunnel. And it sounds like at minimum, if the walkway is going to be on the east side, you'd want to put the artwork on the west side so people could look across at it. Is it, what what sort of interaction is going on here between Caltrans and the Arts Commission and are there any wrinkles here to iron out?
I might have. Richard. Help me out on this one as well, at least when I was assigned to the application, I'm not aware of any contact that Caltrans had with the Arts Commission regarding this mural. And since I've been assigned to it, I haven't had any contact with members of the Arts Commission in terms of what they're planning for that mural. So I'm not sure if anyone from Caltrans has had any conversations with them as well. But I have not been involved in any of those.
I don't even know if it's a mural per se, but some kind of artwork, yeah.
Yeah, yes, and and to echo what Adam has stated, the the most that we've learned about it. It was that there was a talk of doing art and write mural, I'm not too sure if it's individual pictures or mural. But along one of the walls adjacent to the walkway, that was the the most that we had learned in our department.
Well, for what it's worth, it seems like it would be useful to put it on the opposite side of the. The. Bridge so that people on the walkway could look out and see it and not just have to be rubbing against it.
Right.
I just want to comment on that real quickly, as I remember. It is some kind of Department of Transportation grant, I believe it's two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So. Obviously, the engineers aren't, aren't the artists. So the city should at least. Contact the. The planning department should at least contact the. Arts Commission and figure out what they're doing, my question of. Caltrans people here today is. Is this? Does the placement of any kind of art inside of the tunnel? Change anything that you would have to do and anything that we should be concerned about?
Nancy's hand is up.
Yes, thank you for unmuting me, I am aware of that project, it is Caltrans project and we are coordinating with this project, it will be on the other side of the walkway, the other wall.
Okay, so it's not our concern. Jeff, did you want to go ahead? Can you unmute Jeff? Jeff, you're still muted.
Can't hear you, Jeff.
Can you hear me? Yeah, yes, okay, so. You're replacing the culvert underneath the highway, right, and is, are there? Apart from the the fish ladder type thing, are there structural issues with the existing culvert? That make it unsafe or is it getting old or does it need to be replaced or? Or? Are there any structural issues with the culvert itself?
Well, the existing culvert right now is hard bottom. Which is not, it's not fish passage. Visibility. So right now it's concrete bottom, the existing culvert. In order for it to be a fresh passage. Stream, it has to be natural. So we cannot just remove the bottom of the culvert. That alternative was left that during our study. To try to keep that cover and just remove the bottom, then it would basically collapse and it wouldn't. To try to keep that cover and just remove the bottom, then it would basically collapse and it wouldn't structurally would not be stable. That's why we have to replace it with a bridge.
Okay, so the whole, the whole project is essentially driven by the need to make a welcoming habitat for steelhead or whatever.
That's correct. Mainly at this location is for that. That's correct.
Okay.
And the culvert cell is also all.
Okay. Have, in the course of doing this, let me just say parenthetically, there was an old story. Probably ten years old now, but or maybe fifteen. That the reason why Caltrans was interested in doing this was because Caltrans and another part of the state had ended up inadvertently dumping a bunch of dirt into a stream. And this was their way of avoiding, or they're basically impelled to do this project by the Coastal Commission in order to avoid responsibility for that that earlier dump. Have any studies been done about the that show the likelihood of steelhead returning to this this stream once the project has been completed?
To answer your first question, I'm not aware of that issue about the dirt being dumped and this project's created for that. So.
Just something I heard years ago. I'm not saying it is true, but that was the story that went around.
Okay, so as far as the steelhead return, I can return this to our biologist. Peter, would you mind answer that question?
I, yes, um, to answer your question. There was a study done. I don't remember the exact date of Solstice Creek. It was done by NOAA Fisheries, National Marine Fisheries Service to analyze the habitat of Solstice Creek for steelhead trout. And they determined that there was adequate habitat in Solstice Creek for for steelhead trout. I don't recall the exact findings, but I do recall that it did identify that it was sufficient habitat primarily, especially I believe in the upstream areas within the National Park Service property where there is more perennial flow.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, just from my memory, we had a planning commission hearing maybe fifteen years ago, authorizing the fish ladder. And then there was a flood or something and the funding didn't come through. But it's been authorized and it's gone through the Coastal Commission and there was a big study at that time. I have a couple of questions if no.
Tell you what, John, when you catch your first steelhead, steelhead in that in that creek, I'll buy you a drink.
Okay, I just know that Little Bush used to have a picture of him holding a big one up in Malibu Creek. So somebody caught one there, but it might be in nineteen thirty-eight. Okay, I my questions, basically on on your sheet one of forty-four or sheet plan five. Let's see, Plan D fifty-five, you talk about I believe lights. Are there lights in the tunnel and are they on all night? How does that work? Anybody know? I think it's Plan One of forty-four, general plan.
I'm not sure how that works. I think we do put it down there for the pedestrians. So there is light where the pedestrian is. The pedestrian pathway only. If it's an issue, we could always put a timer on it to be turned off at certain time.
Well, I'm just, let me ask the biologist. Is that something that we should require? I don't know if fish like.
Yeah, motion sensor at least.
Or whatever. Biologist available? Yes. Well, okay.
And as we, as specialists hear questions that they are able to respond to, if they could click the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen, please?
Yeah, John, Peter has his hand up. I think his mic just needs to be open.
Okay, well, there's Peter. Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, if if I think if we're gonna have light, the ideal scenario would be either to have a timer or to have it situated in such a way that you're minimizing the glare to the to the creek or into the other natural areas. And that can be done as well with more directional light, having it lower to the ground, such you know, kind of a type designs. And that is something that we discussed when we were looking at needing light.
Okay, so that's something you don't object to. Okay.
John, on that point, if I could just clarify, it sounds like we're talking about similar principles as are underlying the dark sky ordinance. We have a ceiling. Yeah, the similar principles about nature preservation and so forth. So.
Yeah, but I doubt if our light, our light ordinance.
No, it would, it would, it would not. But I'm just saying by way of guidance, maybe maybe what could be effective would be little, I forget what they're called, but like the sort of theater aisle lights. That would be down near people's knees on the wall side. So if they came on on the timer, they would still be shielded from the stream bed by the base of the the pedestrian walkway itself. So the walkway is there and the little lights are gatlet footlights, maybe. No, that's not the right word either.
Well, let me, let me put it this way. I'm gonna try to make a motion, an amendment that lights in the tunnel shall be environmentally
Yeah.
appropriate and and used only when required.
On a timer.
Yeah. And and before we get to the point, there's no objection from Caltrans to something like that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. My next question is, there's mention of a septic system involved here. Is that is that something you guys are putting in? Or is that the old building that they used to day laborers used to live in on the creek or what?
I think that's the location eleven.
That is. Is that referring to the sewers that they had from Union seven six, they have a sewer line running across to O'Kee Corral site? That's where they put their, what you call, this the septic pit?
Yeah.
So our project need to realign that line because the bridge is coming in. So we just realign it to the same pit that they have currently, just the sewer line can realign it. That's all.
Okay, and Richard? Do we still allow offsite sewage disposal? Is this something that needs to be corrected? Because that's that's going across two ashes and a stream and underneath the road to a property that's not owned by the person dumping the sewage?
That is correct. They have a conditional use permit. I believe I'd have to look it up by address on our database. But I want to say we actually had this discussion in front of the planning commission when they were redoing that system. They are unable to have an area to percolate on their property. So they, the code does allow for the issuance of conditional use permit to allow for the offsite dispersal of waste. And so they have historically had a system there. It was permitted by the county. And when the repairs were processed through the city, it maintained. They, this conditional use permit, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do two things at once on the screen.
Enough answer. We don't need to.
Sorry, I was trying to get you the date, so I apologize.
Yeah, it's, it's just from memory.
But where does it drain?
It drains into the, there's a pit over by where there used to be an old gas station over in the Boerivage property.
So is, does that lead to the stream or no?
Probably, but you know, it's it's dent and stone. Nancy, Paige, did you want to speak? You have your hand up?
Yeah, just so what Richard have shared is pretty much what I want to share. They do have a permit to be in that area and they have the Eastman from the property owner to put that septic pit there also. So this project is basically real. Because when we take out the cover, the line of being impacted, so we're just putting it back, the line, that's all. We're not doing anything else to it. Just maintaining the line.
Okay, thank you. Now is the walkway open twenty-four seven? Or is there any control of the use of it?
At this point, we don't have any restriction unless there a need to be.
Okay, and and it's, it's, looks to me like it's ten feet or so above the riverbed. So is there so so that you to get from the walkway to the riverbed, you'd have to go down to the beach and then walk back up into the river. Is that correct?
Yes, but yes, you have to come from the beach or from somewhere upstream. So you can't get from that site just down there. It's pretty tall.
Okay, and it's got guardrails on it, I assume. Yeah, I see them. Let's see, there's a couple others that are kind of important. Is there any access from the state park?
To the stream itself?
To, yeah, to your walkway or the stream, or is there a trail or anything that goes down the stream?
So there's currently is a dirt trail from the state park area on the other side of that row was like Corral and enter into the property area. That access still exists. Yes, we have meeting with MRCA. However, in the future of MRCA, you want to connect those trail to this walkway, they may.
Okay, and so my question would be, why did you put it on the east side instead of the west side? So they could connect.
We have been working with the city and the property owner and everybody on this one. And the city had requested to put it on the east side. And also the the Jason property owner and everyone.
Okay, now my real question is there's an area you look on page six of twenty-four of your your staff report.
And also one other, one other reason why we put on the east side because MRCA have an Eastman trail from this property on that side also, which in the future they need to connect. They will connect directly from there also. I just want to point that out.
There's also a crosswalk on the west side.
That that's correct. So the reason for the walkway on the east side is for future connection with MRCA trail Eastman that they have currently is on the east side.
Okay, so when I, you purchased the property adjacent to the highway as shown on figure five and the staff report on page eight. What is do you own the blue area, the proposed temporary access? Or is that owned by the I don't know, state parks or fishing game or whatever?
Do we have that drawing to show? I don't have that drawing in front of me to reference what you looking at. If it's a time, okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, that's close to it. I'm talking about right there where the sort of pink area is, it looks like you own up to all that green area and then.
We own up to the dark green area, I believe.
Okay, and then above that, there's a, there's a proposed temporary access and it goes to both sides of the stream creek and comes out in the middle of the creek.
Okay, so we do own the light green also, the accessway, the pedestrian access road. We own that portion also.
Right, if you have the staff report, can you show page eight of the staff report? Is that possible? Because they don't apparently have the staff report. Is it possible or am I giving you that horse aid?
I'd have to ask Alex if he can.
Alex, can you put up
up on
A to the staff report?
On the packet. I can link as well. My understanding is that it's.
We actually only have the presentations. We do not have any of the packets or anything like that. So if someone can send me whatever needs to be shown, we can do it that way. But we don't have the staff report.
I can send you the staff report, Alex.
I can, I can send Alex a screenshot of just that image.
Perfect, yes.
Okay, one second.
So he's talking about figure five, right?
Figure five, yes.
Okay, Alex, it should be in your inbox momentarily.
While while you're waiting on that, the parcel immediately to the north and northwest, that's MRCA land?
Well, part of it is Boerivage land.
To the to the northwest, up the creek bed.
The Boerivage folks, they own, that parcel goes up and actually connects to Corral Canyon. There's a at the very, I'd say, top left corner, you see like a white thing, which is a shed. And that's all on the Boerivage property.
Okay, that's the shed I was asking about the septic system. Does that, is that still occupied by people? And does it have a bathroom facility? It used to.
I would have to look that up for you. I'm only, because I, I really, top of my head, the the wastewater approval was for the the restaurant in the old house.
Okay, so you see what I'm talking about, the proposed temporary access? Is that something Caltrans is building? And it appears to go directly through the middle of the tunnel in the stream bed. Is that gonna be there permanently? Is it gonna be removed? What is it? Does anybody know?
Again, if you're a member of the applicant team that knows the answer, if you could click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
Temporary will be only used during construction and it will be removed after construction, before construction is complete.
And it's used by Caltrans employees instead of the public?
This one probably provided for public also, not just Caltrans employee.
Okay, can you tell us the necessity of that? Because I know that area fairly well and there's a pretty steep embankment on the west side. I don't know what's on the east side.
Yeah, I don't remember why we have this access. This is new to me. Peter or anybody, do you know that one?
Hi, so are we looking at the striped blue area, proposed temporary access? Yeah, so that was proposed for equipment for during construction. Yeah, that's in our temporary, our temporary construction, isn't it?
Okay, so for the contractor only?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you're gonna have like. And you're going to have like a stairway down the side of the hill or something to get to it? Because that's, you can't, you can't
They're usually gray and it there, there's no stairway. They usually gray it and they bring the equipment down.
So the question there would be from the biologist. You're obviously going to be bulldozing in a federal stream. Do you, do you have those permits or whatever you need to do?
Yes, we're working with C- CDFW right now for all this area and they usually we will be working doing non dry season, non raining.
Okay.
When the big stream are dry.
Uh, now, why would it connect to the other side of the stream? Do you have access to that property? The east side of the stream?
I know we have more area than that temporary construction Eastman that we have got from the property owner. So I have to look at the other map. This map, I can't really tell what the limit go up to that we have, but everything that we propose are within our the right that we already have obtained.
Okay, the only reason I'm asking is this is all issue. And so it's restricted from public access unless it's public access to the private. So I'm sure you guys are exempt, but
I understand. Thank you.
It's not going to be allowed to use this area to enter the tunnel, correct? The tunnel area? During and it'll be removed afterwards?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, you're, and I don't you still have that slide that shows the green walkways? We can look at it or we can go from memory, but what I'm mainly concerned about is how people, yeah. Do you have coastal permission to take out the parking in that area or how are people going to get their access there? They have to walk around the highway, along the highway and there is no walkway there.
You you talking about the light green area?
Yeah, it's
Yeah. So we, we acquired that property.
The what?
Right now, right there, you you will see a fan that belongs to a, okay, Corral, the restaurant next to it. We acquired that property, so we will clear that and make that a walkway that people could have access, public access to.
No, I'm talking about if you wanted to go to that and we're on the west side of it. So you cross that crosswalk or you parked on the other side of the highway and cross the crosswalk uh, to the corner. Is there anywhere to walk on the highway? Because that is a parking zone right there. Are you going to have no parking there?
No, so the the crosswalk that you see on this screen right now, that crosswalk will be removed to the other side.
Over to the other side of the street, the other side of Corral Canyon?
Yes, so we will relocate that crosswalk to the other side of the intersection. And then people could cross that and then go to that. There's a sidewalk there. They could access that to the walkway. It, is that the question you're asking?
One, where it says number one is where the crosswalk's going to be?
Yes.
Okay, and the other one will disappear?
Correct.
Okay, isn't the light at the crosswalk? The street light?
Yes, the, the whole intersection, we will redo the signal at this intersection.
So you know, people are touchy about the highway here. The people coming down Corral Canyon will not have a stoplight to their, to their right. It'll only be to their left. Is that correct?
No, that, that whole intersection will be a full way, we will have signal for the whole for our direction. It's fully, fully controlled with signal.
So are there going to be two signals or one?
Can be four signal. But you have the T intersection, but you, you will have signal for crossing for, okay, Corral to turn left, turn right, and then the straight on the highway itself. So it will be fully controlled by signal, this whole intersection.
Is there going to be a stoplight where you enter the restaurant?
On the left? No.
It will be on the right. In this case, it'd be where you see the parking lot there. You're not going to have a stoplight to go into the you'd say, okay, Corral. That doesn't mean any less. Is that the name of the restaurant now?
Yes, oh, Calaminko. I'm sorry. The property says, okay, Corral, but the restaurant is Calaminko.
Okay, and how do you get into that parking lot? Is there a light there?
No, it, you get into that parking lot the way you, you get into it right now. There's no change in that area. The the movement, how, how you access the parking lot to that property is not being changed because of the bridge.
Just, just the wa- crosswalk, it will no longer go to the gas station. It will go to that corner.
That's Yes, we're just relocating that crosswalk to the other side, intersection. That's all.
Okay, and is that, has that gone through the city permitting process?
Yes, we've been working with the Public Works on all this, for this whole project.
Okay, but usually crosswalk, is that, is that part of this project or is it a separate project?
It's part of this project.
Okay, do we have any description of it in here?
Uh, I don't know.
Because I didn't see it. Now, of course, this is a bazillion pages, but crosswalks in Malibu are touchy.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
The, the crosswalk is shown, I'm trying to find a larger plan, but in all of their location maps, they are showing the realignments of the one crosswalk. They maintain the crosswalk around Corral along, the crosswalk there where the white car is at Corral Canyon, that's maintained. It's the one on Pacific Coast Highway, and I see that in their location there.
Okay, but Richard, has that gone through the CDP process? Like the one that, the one that came for Nobu a couple weeks ago? Or is that just going to happen and nobody's going to know about it?
What you had a couple of weeks ago was a a major realignment and signals. With this one, there's no loss of public parking. The area is a red zone um, on the north side of the street. And then there's, I don't believe you have parking on the other side. And Adam, I believe Public Works, when they reviewed this, and I wish we had one of their engineers, I believe that was part of their review. Are you able to, are you able to confirm that?
Let me see if there's any sort of written statement in their approval to that. But if it was in, if it's in the plans, then they, they would have reviewed it.
I'm looking at a lot of sheets on this and with a lot of overviews and no crosswalk.
They have it on C6 in their location map.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is this Jeff will remember this. This used to be one of the most dangerous corners in Malibu. And there was a big battle to get a a stoplight there and a big traffic study. And I went through the planning commission and all that and so first I've ever heard of it. Now, of course, I didn't, I guess I didn't read every single inch of this thing. Uh, but it could be rather controversial.
My, my, my concern on this one little aspect of it is, is that you think there'd be some sort of formal traffic study or some kind of documentation to indicate that realigning that crosswalk is still a safe thing.
And I, and I do recall, and Adam, were you involved in those conversations? I know that with Public Works, we had a conversation about moving the crosswalk when they were looking at this because the idea was to eliminate folks from jaywalking or running across the highway as they do now to get to the, the undercrossing. I know it's not a formal undercrossing at this point, but in the currently what was happening is that people did not want to walk the extra couple hundred feet there, we'll say, and they were running across the highway. And so that was the impetus of why our Public Works Department had looked at this. I wish they would have made a comment.
Richard, why would you want to run across the highway to go to to go away from the beach? When you theoretically, you're trying, why would you want to run across the highway and walk under the tunnel when all you have to do is walk down the embankment and you're on the beach?
Uh, this would be for the cars that park along the hillside between Beau Rivage or Dol Beau Rivage and Malibu Seafood. A large number of cars park on that side of the highway. And they're finding that nobody was using the walk, the crosswalk because of the dis- distance. Um, so this is an attempt to move it closer.
Closer, it's about half a mile. And this is 40 feet or something, but whatever. Uh, I just
Can I ask a question?
Are we actually approving this crosswalk when we vote on this tonight? Or is it a done deal and nobody told anybody about it? Or how does it stand in the approval process? And Nancy, can you unmute Nancy? She probably has the answer.
All right, I just want to share, we did take this project with the crosswalk chain to the Safety Commission for Malibu last year. And, and they were okay with that. And the reason why we move it, it is for safety. A lot of people say, for example, they park on uh, the Corral Canyon Road. And they don't want to use the walkway. They want to just cross the highway to get to the beach without having to take that loop. That's the other reason we're moving the crosswalk to this side for that reason. So, so they asked, we did take consider, into consideration this issue and concern to make it more convenient and safe for the public to cross it by moving it.
Okay.
John? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, at, at the risk of asking a silly question, you know, we have this elaborate uh, walkway through the stream tunnel with a crosswalk next to it. I, it, it seems redundant to me and I, I, maybe I've missed stuff along the way, uh, but I, I, you know, I don't understand why, why we need both, why, uh, if, if we're you know, restoring a, a, a fish habitat, uh, the, the pedestrian walkway seems to me to be an intrusion to that. And we, we have a, you know, if we're going to move the crosswalk there, I mean, why, why do we need both?
You hit it right on the head. That's why I'm asking this.
Can I answer that question? So the walkway came as an after thought, it was a recommendation also from the Malibu Safety Commission. There's a little controversy from that. Uh, we were sort of forced to put in the walkway, just to be honest on, on that in order to get this permit through.
Well, to Mark's point, i- if you've got the walkway there, then that would recommend that maybe you leave the crosswalk where it is. So at least they're in two different places.
Well, at a minimum.
We can do that too. If that's the recommendation, it's not an issue.
Richard, I, I, I am totally confused on how planning works in the city. The, the Safety Commission cannot approve anything. So how can they force Caltrans and gazillion dollars to put in something that makes no sense? How does this happen?
One thing, I wish that the Public Works folks were available to answer that since they were the, the driving force here, it seems to be. As I, when I joined in on the conversations, I know that there was a safety concern and that's why they had asked for it to be moved. The, the commission, of course, the, you're the approval body. If you don't want it moved, I would recommend that as we make that clear as part of the motion. And if needed, Caltrans could always seek an amendment to relocate it. If that's the
We could also do the same thing with the crosswalk. We just say get rid of the crosswalk.
Uh, right. Conversely, yes, you could just prove, just make it clear that
I'm sorry, the, 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 the walkway, the path
Walkway underneath the tunnel.
I mean, that's millions of dollars, I'm sure. For nothing. There, nobody parks there. There is no place to park, quite frankly.
The Art Commission has their plan that, that sort of relies on people walking through there.
You're going to take a $50 million project and you're going to spend, you know, waste it on a mural? I'm not knocking their mural, but that's not a valid decision to spend that kind of money. Okay, I I am mystified how and, and this is, you know, I chastise for me for saying this, but how Public Works can come to the planning commission with a street light removal, moving two weeks or two meetings ago and not have a clue what they were doing or whether they're replacing it and not being able to explain it to us. And now we find out there's a crosswalk which went through huge amount of effort to get. City spent at least a million dollars putting it in, a, a street light. And now we don't even have a traffic study knowing why. It's being changed.
And changing the location of the light.
Yeah, it, it now it makes, as far as I'm concerned, it would have nothing to do to screw up building the tunnel. To say no walkway, no, don't move until we get a traffic study and find out what's going on. Especially a walkway that's 10 feet above the riverbed with ramps and all this kind of stuff. So anyway, I'm pontificating and now I know what's going on. Now, my second, my real
John, John, so others of us have hands up too.
Okay, I just wondered, okay, I'll come back. I'll come back. Who's next?
Go ahead, Craig.
Yes.
Maybe more, I don't know, okay. The, the area on slide 10 with the multicolored, uh, we've seen it a number of times now. Just to clarify, there's the yellow area up in the creek bed is marked as permanent impacts. You see next to the magenta, the yellow area, permanent impacts, but it's what I'm, if I'm reading this right, that is not a part of the land that was acquired or is that now Caltrans ownership where the permanent impacts are? That would be a question for Nancy, I believe.
I, I believe that Nancy spoke to that point earlier.
Uh, it, well, I thought she was talking about the, the light green walkway area. I'm now talking in the creek bed. And I think she said that the ownership was the dark green area.
So, so the, the yellow area you're asking for?
Um, yeah.
Mission Hill? Okay.
And yeah.
I have to look at the map, but I believe we, we do have the property right all the way up to there to create that
I think what you said before was the dark green area is what you own.
The dark green is what we own in fee. The yellow, I think, probably just the temporary for grading. I, I need to see the right way map to clarify that.
Yeah, this particular map identifies the yellow as permanent impact. And the purple is the temporary.
Permanent impact as though we are regrading and everything. That's correct.
So I'm just, I just want to make sure that that's in fact your land and not Beau Rivage or somebody else's.
Yes, all, all the work that we propose are, we, we do have right to be in there to do the work.
Okay, um, then my next question, this is probably for everybody to think about. Um, on the location 10 or I'm, well, let's see now, I'm confounding the number, the location 11, the culvert that's to the west of here, that's on slide The culvert that's to the west of here, that's on slide. Um.
Right, the drainage system that we're replacing.
Yeah, slide number five. That that one, if you want to put that up so we can all see, that shows that the several existing drainage inlets. Feed to the yellow existing culvert that's to be replaced. And I'm just wondering for everybody to think about whether there are any issues with the private property there, presumably it's. Private property entirely between the houses, but some sort of easement here. And are there any issues with the uh property impacting those private properties in the process of replacing that culvert?
Well, I'm sure that that's a drainage for the highway.
Yeah. Probably an easement.
There's for sure, that's an easement.
For sure, it's an easement, but in in the process of actually reinstalling a new one, what kind of impact to the property is involved?
May I explain?
Please.
So the yellow one currently, what when we put this drainage system is drainage water. To the beach, that what the system was in before all this house was developed.
Yeah.
When the house was developed, they basically just took our system and. And continue it without getting a permit from us and letting us know until we did the research. With this project that we find out. So this line was put under the foundation. It's very hard for us to get to, to maintain and to make sure. So this change basically will not. Will will be better for them. We just abandoned the yellow portion and there won't be any water going to there anymore. So the yellow line is draining the highway water only and not any water from the property.
Well, now it says to be replaced, so that yellow line is a a new version is not going to continue betw- down between the houses there.
Correct, so when we replace it with the blue. The yellow line basically is not going to be functioning anymore, so there won't be any water going down that anymore, so it will not impact any of this property. It will be better for them.
Where then, oh, and so the existing head wall, that's where it all comes will come out in the future.
Correct, that's correct. So the outlet will be at what the existing head wall, the the circle right there, the brown and the blue come to. Currently, the all the water from the highway is draining toward the yellow.
Okay, I understand that now. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, somebody else?
Uh Jeff. Put your hand down, would you, Craig, so I can keep track of uh.
Sorry, yeah.
What's going on? Jeff is on next and then Mark.
Yeah, I I want to follow up on what uh Craig was just talking about because. I don't quite understand. Um. Where the drainage route is going to go. Um, there has been some. Discussion, rumor, people talking about. The Caltrans asserting that their right of way. Uh is not. Coextensive with the paved area, but in fact extends. Southward or toward the ocean, some. Um. Fifteen, twenty, twenty-five feet in some cases. Uh is is and I'm beginning to put two and two together and realize that that. Um. Part of that may have been generated by this project. Um. If you go back to the earlier slide, I think it's eleven.
The one we just looked at was ten.
Was it ten? I'm sorry, okay. The one we've been looking at most of the evening.
Yeah, ten.
I want to try to place. This yellow culvert. And the blue culvert. Um. In the context of that other diagram, if I can.
They're not on it.
They're not on it.
I I know they're not, but but you can see a little bit of what I'm talking about if we just.
Now Nancy's got her hand raised. You may want to answer your question about.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
So our right way, our property right is beyond the edge of that highway. If if you are aware of where our right way actually go all the way to the parking lot. In front of these houses.
The green here.
For for the the seven house in this area where the the yellow drainage is, and then you have like seven home there. The state right away line actually go up all the way to the front of their house.
And is there any? Is there any part of this program or this project that intends to expand? Um. The the usage of the highway in that direction toward the front of those houses?
No. We we widened the sidewalk a little, so we're not impacting. Into the drive up to the parking lot or anything, so we're still maintaining that there. Does that answer your question?
Uh it does in a way because the people who live in those areas got notices from. Caltrans probably a year ago. Uh about Caltrans asserting uh rights and it is, I mean, I know. You think you know where the property line is, but in fact it's disputed. Uh and there are lots of historical data. Um. On the subject, but I just want to make sure that 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 what is going on here is not. Um. Is not expanding or acting on those claims of uh of of your property right, except to the extent that. Uh shown on diagram five. Uh in in terms of where culverts are being replaced and so forth. Uh so there's nothing further to the south or ocean side beyond. The what abandonment of that existing uh culvert that's yellow? Is that going to be abandoned or or replaced?
So so as part of this project, the farther end. To the right, if you're looking at this picture. The last house toward the beach where the cover is currently. We do need a piece of that problem, so they did overbuild the garage onto the state property and this project does need. Part of that area. For the bridge. And yes, we did send them a letter to inform them of that and we are working with them.
It would just to clarify, you're not talking about the house on the picture on the screen. You're talking about the house closest to the canyon.
That's correct.
Which you could see in in slide ten.
Now you complete.
A- and we were, we were working with this property too, with the yellow pipe, but we. Since we have relocated here, we don't need anything from that property at this point. But we were negotiating and trying to. Realign that pipe, but we see that it can be a a challenge. That's why we realign it to the blue line.
The. Forgive me if I I'm trying to grasp which way water is flowing on the. Looking at the at the red circle, it's furthest to the left, it says existing drainage inlet to be replaced.
Mm-hmm.
Drainage will flow from that to the east. To the the little white arrow that says existing drainage inlet.
Uh existing drainage inlet, the water from there will flow to. The one where the the brown line and the blue line come together, the cover uh the headwater.
All right, so it's 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 blowing, it's it's flowing the other way. It's flowing westward, right?
Yeah, it's flowing to the edge of the highway from the middle.
Okay, and the blue culvert. Water drainage is going to flow from. The north side of Pacific Coast Highway or I guess that divider line, wherever it is there. And it's going to flow to the west. To that existing drainage inlet with it's got the red circle around it.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
So just to follow up her point, maybe we should look at map ten and and uh clarify that the. The mo- easternmost house closest to the. Channel is the one where they've said they need to reclaim something from the owner there. And that would probably be that 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 separate structure is a garage.
That would be the property on the left, the the most le- leftward structure.
Nancy, please, and she can answer this, these.
Yeah, Nancy, that we're you're you're saying the house that you needed to reclaim something from is the one on the eastern side here, and that would be the. Separate garage, is that what you're saying?
We we will not be impacting the garage, but they have a fence that outside the garage area, we have to remove part of that and and. And the planting. So all this planned that right there, we will be impacted. So we've been in coordination and talking to this property owner. About the project, so they are aware of the impact and what we're doing here. So the garage basically overbuilt into the state right away at this point, but we're not asking them to take it down or anything at the at at this moment.
Okay.
Okay, um.
Mark's had his hand up.
Mark, I didn't see it. Okay, it's in the light. Okay.
Yeah, no problem. Uh my question is, uh back back on that. Slide, the color coded slide that showed the uh. Uh stream bed, yes. That one and the the light green is the proposed. Pedestrian walkway to get you to. The uh under, you know, the the pedestrian underpass. I I think, uh my question is, is if you eliminated. The pedestrian underpass, does it? Impact the number of trees that have to be removed? I I don't know if that's for Nancy or the previous gentleman that.
Good question.
Anybody that could uh on the.
I just got on me right now, so sorry. Um, no, the 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 tree had to be removed because we have to redo the the bed stream for the habitat for the fish. Uh and one other thing I'd like to add, you know, the pedestrian walkway, um. It is beyond just the city also, it also a condition for the right way take that we we had from the property owner. We had to put that in also as a condition.
You have to put it.
We can't really eliminate that at all.
Can you explain that because you own that property, correct?
Right, but as part of the. Property that we take from them, we did have a condition that we will put in the walkway as part of the negotiation.
And that walkway is for them to use?
No, it's for the public. Also, they could use it, but the public also uses it. So basically. It's it's not a private walkway. That's why it's connect to the sidewalk, allowing the. Public to use it. Currently, they have a stair there as Richard explained it earlier. And that stair, the public could not get to it. They wouldn't know that it exists that this walkway here that we put, it connects to the sidewalk itself. So the public would know there's a walkway there to take to cross.
So they are going to cross Escha. With a private trail to get to your walkway.
You mean from the other side?
Well, from the restaurant.
No, uh from the restaurant. Is the property.
Do they have to go, do they? Okay, can you put up the slide? It's a couple. Uh I'll tell you which one it is, it's. It it shows the Escha.
Yeah, but but the their property also uh is part of that, that they currently are being used as a walkway anyway.
But that's illegal, so that's why I want to straighten this out now.
I see.
And that's been that Escha. They may not cross that with a private trail. Your trail is not going across there. So how are they getting to your trail?
You're talking about the walkway, then they have to walk outside to.
They have to go to the coast highway and walk down the highway.
Walk down that trail from the sidewalk side, mm-hmm.
Okay, but that's not how it's designed. You're saying it's designed so they can get through it by walking through the Escha.
Hmm, no, I.
Can they walk from the. What says location ten, the building? Can they walk over to your walkway without going on the highway?
I have to take a look at that because I think the walkways next to it, they could always have an opening where the the um parking lot is right now. To get to that walkway.
Well, we need.
Case area.
Because we can't give a permit for them to do that.
Okay, if that's the case, then they probably have to walk toward the outside, the sidewalk, and they get to it.
I think I think to clarify here, if you look back at the slide ten.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like you have that light green walkway, how there's an arc on the eastern edge of it, that sort of implies that maybe there's a railing there. If the point is to have people coming from Bo revage Calamigos to be able to use that public walkway. You'd want to have make sure that the eastern end of the walkway is open and not. Maybe that's just how it's drawn, maybe that's not a ramp.
Yeah, but Craig, my point is they are not allowed to do that.
They're not allowed to go through the Escha, but they're allowed to walk out to the the walkway adjacent to the highway.
Make it go to the highway and get on the walk on on.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they can't go across. This brown area to get to that. Walkway.
Right.
I don't know how. Uh it could be a condition of taking the property to provide them with a walkway since they can't get to it.
Because it's through a in their domain and thing like that, so.
Yeah, but they you you can't, you we're, we have to follow the local coastal plan. And you can do a private agreement to violate the local coastal plan.
So wha- what I'm saying, I I'm not saying that we have a direct connection for them, we just have. An agreement that we put in the walkway if that if their. Assets cannot be from the property directly, they have to ask a walk outside to Pacific Coast. And access from that point like everybody else.
Okay, do you do you have, do you have the ability? To fence off. Your property. So it cannot, they cannot use the Escha.
Yes, we could fence out the property. We could put a fence around our our property.
What, if I could jump in quickly on sheet. And it's not very clear here, but on the pedestrian walkway layout sheet number one, you have uh the Caltrans, when I say you. Um.
A railing, right?
Can you tell us what sheet that is, Richard?
It's. It's labeled as pedestrian walkway layout number one. It's towards the back. Of uh all the plans.
Thirty of forty-four.
Thank you. I I think the. The appro- to I think to address the concern the Commissioner Mazza is pointing out. Perhaps just require the railing to to go to the highway. And that would ensure that nobody walks across that tree area.
Okay.
The railing go to the highway. I don't understand that.
The railing for the walkway, for the railing around it, is that what you're proposing, Richard?
Yes, so that way. You're creating a physical barrier so someone can't. Access the walkway halfway through. They have to enter the walkway.
Mm-hmm.
Uh where it 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 begins in the public right of way.
Okay. That could be done.
Would that Vice Chair Mazza address your concern?
Uh as long as. There is no other access to the actual stream bed.
Yeah, I Caltrans, I I don't believe is proposing any other act- uh access and.
Oh, I'm just saying that I I would also like to have. Caltrans's boundary of ownership be fenced, so they can't just go around the walkway and walk down the stream bed.
So his his recommendation might be that in the place where they have the temporary access on the west side of the creek.
Mm-hmm.
For construction, that after the fact, they would go back and put a fence along there between the road and the creek, so people.
No, the eastern side.
Wrong. Maybe both sides maybe, but.
Yeah.
Okay, I I think we do have some kind of rolling right now on top of that as. Toward the slope area. But we could, we could look and do that.
Okay, uh. Okay, so a barrier, an Escher barrier fence. Or railings, okay, because that this is, this was a big, big, big coastal issue. When they tried to put a hotel down in the Escha. Or motel or whatever it was, the bed breakfast with no breakfast, um. And that's what killed it. So this could be appealed to coastal and it ain't gonna pass. So, okay, so that was one of my major concerns is. Uh. That now I. I let me ask whoever's in charge here, um. If we said. You cannot move. The lights. Without coming through. The normal procedures of coming to the planning commission and traffic studies and all that, that has nothing, that will not screw up your. Your bridge at all, right?
I, I'm sorry, that question again, the light you're talking about?
Yes, the, the location of the lights are independent of, of the construction of the bridge and the underpass. Is that correct?
You're talking about the signal light of the intersection or the lights of the pedestrian?
Signal light of the intersection.
Yes, it's independent, but the intersection, we sort of having to redo the program and everything, so we are redoing the signal light. What?
I know, and if we said. Hold off on the signal lights because it hasn't been considered by the planning commission. Nor I assume a traffic study or anything else. Or a comment by the residents of Corral Canyon. Uh, that would have no effect on your scheduling of building this bridge.
No, but, but it, I just want to share currently, there is a signal light there already.
I know, and you're moving it.
No, we're not moving yet. We're just replacing it because we are realigning the row a little. We're just putting back what is there. The only thing that we relocating is the crosswalk. To the other side, that's all.
Okay, but the crosswalk won't have a signal on it, right? The signal's across the street. The signal is on the corner. Of the gas station.
The. Signal is for the whole intersection regardless of where your crosswalk is.
Okay, and I, I just don't remember where the signals are. I thought there was one, you say there's one on each side of the road?
Yes, the signal is for the whole intersection. So regardless of whether you want to put the crosswalk on one side of the street or the other, it doesn't really matter.
But you'll have to re, uh, re, uh, relocate the pole, right? Because you'll have a crosswalk button.
Yes, that's the only thing that we have to modify, but the crosswalk button is a simple thing that we could modify. If you need to be on this side, we can make that change easily. It's not a big change. It's not the whole signal itself.
Well, let me ask you this. Is there, is there, is the light on the? The. The gas station side of the street or on the tunnel side of the highway?
On both sides.
Both sides, so you're not moving the light at all.
John, you can see it on the, on the slide that's in front of us. You can see the shadows or the signals on each side of Corral Canyon.
Okay, so the light's not moving.
The light are being reconstructed, replaced for a new facility, but it's pretty much the same system you have out there.
So, but it's not moving. It's staying in the same spot. So let me ask you this. If it's staying in the same spot, why don't you have two crosswalks?
Why don't we one?
Why do you have to move the crosswalk? Just put one in on the other side? The cars have to stop at the crosswalk. Going south. Right? They don't stop in the middle of the intersection. Where the, where the crosswalk is. Why eliminate?
Okay, that could be considered. So what you're saying is that keep the crosswalk on this side the way it is and put another one on the other side?
Correct. Because there's a lot more, that, nobody goes to that corner where your tunnel is, nobody. There's maybe parking for three or four cars. But the other is a, is a major gas station and houses. And a public parking lot. Uh, on the beach. Access to the gas station, uh. Munchy store, I don't know what you call them, uh. So.
That could be done, yes.
Okay. Now. My con, uh, sec, next question is. Is there any control of people using? The tunnel. Uh, for purposes other than, well, for any purpose. Is this, is this gonna be a homeless shelter? Do you have any control of? People mixing with the fish is what I'm saying, uh, uh. Grates that go up when the water runs or anything like that, or is it just open?
So the stream bed will be natural, just dirt. And the walkway is above it. Do we restrict certain type of people? No, we don't. So it's a public use. I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, I, I, the public has the, a walkway to go underneath the bridge. My question is, is there anything to restrict them? From using ten feet below the actual riverbed?
But it, it's a sub bottom. I don't think they will be able to walk on it. But no, we don't have any barrier or anything to.
I'm more worried about tents and fires and, uh. Cooking your hot dogs and. Whatever else and going across the street for the liquor store to get your food, um. We have that problem in, in several bridges in Malibu. We've had several fires. Is there any barrier at all?
Because it's a fish passage, we cannot put any barrier. We cannot just close it off.
Well, I mean, closing it off, yeah, well, okay. Uh, fish only jump so high, but yeah. So there's, there's nothing. You don't have no trespassing signs or. Anything like that.
We could put up a signing, that's as much as we could do because it's a fish passage, so we, we do have CDFW requirement. What we could put down there, so as far as barrier, no, we cannot put those thing in there.
Okay, so you could have signage such as, uh, uh, no exit, uh.
Environmentally sensitive habitat.
Escher area, keep out or something like that?
Signing we could put, it's not a problem.
Okay, um. Richard, can? If we put in a provision like that. Can the city check with the sheriff on what's, what's enforceable? And, and can that be, that language be up to you guys?
We can definitely check with, uh. With the sheriff's department, not a problem. I'm just in my head and Pat, do you see any coastal issues? Uh, no trespassing, I, I, and Pat, I say this because of, you know, how we're working on the signage, LCPA. Um, about access. Do you, do you see any coastal issues with just a? A no trespassing, stay out of, if we make it specific, stay out of the creek bed, because I know these folks have a railing. Uh, for the length of the pathway. Um, obviously, somebody could jump that railing, but I think what I'm envisioning, if I understand Commissioner, Vice Chair Mazza correctly. If somebody comes up from the beach side, I think they could just. Walk right down the center of that thing. Obviously, we could do fencing on this. On the, um, the. The Bovar side, uh, but I don't see any way to really stop people. Uh, from the beach. Pat, do you see any issue with that signage from a coastal perspective?
Hey, my, my gut wants to say no, because once again, what we are. We're enhancing, we're not, obviously not saying, you know, no trespassing, or this isn't a, you know. A hidden secret way to block access to the beach. What we're doing is attempting to protect coastal resources in the form of that. But once again, you know, that's. Yeah, you know, that's kind of the, the, the decision of coastal, should they want to go to the mat on it.
Yeah, and Richard, what, what we're doing is, or Caltrans is doing, is providing access. Through the tunnel. And all we're saying is stay out of the federally protected fish run. And use the sidewalk.
And perhaps it's as simple as some language, it just says, you know, use walkway access, no access. No trespassing access, uh, through, uh, bed, bottom of tunnel or something, but we can definitely work with the sheriff. And as long as Caltrans is open to posting signage, uh. I would say that signage would need to be posted on the, the tunnel itself. I doubt the coastal would want us putting a sign on the beach.
No, no.
Richard, you might be right on that.
Uh, here's, here's the language. You could say environmentally sensitive habitat, no access, use pedestrian access only.
Perfect.
Right.
Okay.
Remember that when I make a motion. Okay, uh. I, I don't have it, I, you know, there's a million little questions to try to figure this thing out, but, uh. Is there, the last question for me, is there a reason why this is twenty-four seven access? Seems to me like that's a pretty weird place to be hanging out at three o'clock in the morning. And you have access for, to the beach, just walk across the highway, you got it.
Grunion Run.
Well, you can go to the beach, there's crosswalks and, uh. Right there, there's, you just walk down the side of the hill and you're on the beach. So I'm just wondering why it can't be posted. Not to use it between midnight and four or something like that. I just want people living. And, uh.
That might be a concern to raise with the sheriff about what.
That's gonna happen. They're, they're gonna live there and people are freaked out about it. Same thing when they try to put in a parking lot at Dan Blocker for the RVs. Homeless RV. The neighbors didn't put up with it. They came down to City Hall with pitchforks. Um, and this is what I'm trying to leave here. So, do you have any reason to? Is there any reason to say? That tunnel is, can be used all night long? Or the gate shouldn't be closed or whatever? And then I guess, does this go to coastal? You know, I mean, if we put it in there and they take it out. They have their right.
Adam, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't see this as a listed public access way. I only see lateral access easements in the area. Is that correct, Adam?
Uh, are you referring to the LCP maps?
Yes.
I have to take a look at that, but I, I believe you're correct.
Yeah, I don't see any vertical access ways. Uh, Nancy, do you know, is there a plan? To have a. A, a, an agency like MRCA or one of these agencies that maintains public access ways? Like LA County or somebody to maintain this?
Richard, uh, yes, we are trying to get into an agreement with MRCA to maintain the walkway, Richard. Uh, we had conversation a few time already. They seem to be very agreeable. We just need to sit down one more time and drop up that agreement.
Do you think it's?
Go ahead.
Uh, uh, thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, do you think they would have any issues with the requirement? To put a, 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 a time lock, uh, like a. Hour before sunrise to an hour after, or, you know, something like a sunset sunrise, uh. To put a, a gate with an automatic lock on it? Do you think there'd be any opposition?
I, I don't know. Have, we, we haven't talked about that item specifically and then how maintainable that kind of. Time mark, right?
Richard, they maintain the parking lot.
I'm sorry?
The state maintains the Dan Blocker parking lot. They have a sheriff that comes there quite often to give tickets. And, uh, so they have the maintenance right there.
Do you, do you think?
They also maintain the beach across the street. They empty all the trash cans and all that kind of stuff.
Is that from the county? I know it's not from the state.
No, it's, it's county. She, I think they're sharing their state park.
State park, okay.
Yeah, you got State Park, County of LA. Uh, beaches and harbors, and then MRCA, uh, I think there's one other entity floating around that does stuff in the city and I forget the name. Uh, but yes, like for example, if perhaps the state parks folks, because I think if I'm not mistaken, they have a lock on Dan Blocker. If it could be the, the same group.
I'm pretty sure it's the guy, the guy that, there was another organization, I think they went away and gave all their stuff to MRCA. It was a guy's name.
Right.
Long time ago, long time ago, twenty years ago, probably. Okay, well, I'm gonna try to make a motion and. I'm open to. Changes, um.
I, I've kept track of the various things that you've thrown in here and maybe Patrick probably has too, so.
You wanna make it?
But you.
Okay, you add the language as I go. First, uh, the first one is. Uh, have the lights. And the tunnel be. Environmentally friendly and, uh, uh, on the timer as required for use.
Okay.
Okay, number two, uh.
You know, i- i- uh, Vice Chair Mazza, I, I, I do apologize in, 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 in taking a look at the existing conditions, I just want to make sure. Because we do have, there are lighting conditions that, that mention. You know, and what's, maybe, so i- i- one of them is twenty-one motion sensor lights shall be programmed to extinguish ten minutes after, after activation. Night lighting, um. Shall be, uh, exterior interior shall be minimized, exterior lighting shall be low intensity and shielded directed downward and inward. So there's no off-site glare or lighting of natural habitat area.
It's just like the last item. It's in, it's in the detail already, so we eliminate that. Okay, um. The proposed temporary access areas for the contractor owned. And that's that blue checked area where they're gonna be grading. You don't want the public in there. Is that good enough language? Okay, uh. We can, uh. I was gonna eliminate the tunnel altogether. I thought Mark had a great idea, not the tunnel, the walkway, but we're told we can't, so, uh. I guess three would be, uh. The. There should be. An ex, uh, an additional crosswalk rather than the elimination of a crosswalk at the light at Corral Canyon. Is that good enough language?
I have problems with that, John. I'm not sure that that, that that. Conforms with highway safety standards. I think the double crosswalk. I'm not a traffic engineer, but it does seem to me that it might be more dangerous than having a single crosswalk.
Well, the reason it's there is, uh. Uh, because. The traffic is the other truck crosswalk. There's no reason for the movement of the crosswalk, so I can change it to say. No, no additional crosswalk.
Yeah, I'll just say, one of the things that I'm nervous about this whole thing is the crosswalk because it, it. It doesn't seem supported by a traffic study or something that really, I mean, it seems like it's fine. It seems fine, but you know, we don't know for sure.
Yeah, and it makes no sense. I mean, all the people in the parking lot, the Dan Blocker, all the people at the beach, all the people that live there. They're going to the gas station and the. Goodie store. They're not going to walk across the highway just so they can walk under the tunnel when they're already on the side of the highway that's got the beach on it. It makes no sense to have one, an extra one. So I, I'll just, if you, Jeff, if you think that that's a problem having two, we'll just have the one that's there, that.
That, that, I would feel better about that.
Okay, uh, that's my motion. No crosswalk on the east side of the intersection. Now I want a, a, um. I don't know how to say this, but, uh, the. Public. Underpass walkway. Shall be. Restricted to entrance from coast highway only. And may not cross the, and access to it may not cross the Escher. And may not cross the and access to it may not cross the Escher.
Um well, I think what you had proposed previously was two things. One, that there be railings around the the whole walkway. So people couldn't just jump on and off it in and out of the Escher. And two, that there be some Escher barrier extending up on either side of the canyon bottoms.
That was gonna be two items. One is the the walkway itself can only be entered from. Coast Highway. It's for the public.
So it has a railing.
Number two. Number two is, and and the railing should do that. Number two is there's a physical barrier. I E fence. Uh along the Escher stream. East and west. Delineation of the Caltrans property. So you can't access the stream from the Escher.
What about the problem? Ms. Page talked about the fact that when the property was acquired. They then a property owner retained. Some rights. She hasn't specified whether the easement rights or other rights. But um are you putting? Caltrans in the position of either violating uh the terms and conditions of its acquisition? Or uh violating your your conditions?
My understanding that was resolved by putting in the walkway, that that was providing adequate access from.
Right, and also.
But but not having, since you don't know what the agreements say or were, and she doesn't remember specifically what they were. Um there really isn't any basis for that assumption.
No, no, the assumption is. Caltrans may not violate the Coastal Act. And if they have made an agreement to violate the Coastal Act and the Coastal Commission has already determined. That that area in the lower field there that the river basin is an Escher. They determined that in a hearing. Fifteen years ago. That they cannot violate Coastal Act and do a private agreement to violate.
Ms. Page has a comment.
Okay, uh leave her unmuted, so we don't have to keep muting and unmuting.
Thank you. Commissioner Jennings is right. We could only put fencing at where we have property in fee. We have an easement that does not give us the full right to just fence the property off.
Yeah, but you have.
To clarify that.
No, you have property in fee, though. You should.
Not not the whole thing.
No, just the checked area, the red checked area.
So so that that would be the condition that we could only agree to. The fencing will be only where we have in fee.
Okay, that's that's the condition.
Okay.
The fee checked area on the map on number five. Must be fenced.
Okay.
But to be clear, you can put a railing around the whole walkway, correct?
Uh along the whole walkway, we could put the railing. I think that area we do have it in fee, but there's an area like Commissioner Mazza. Alluded to on the creek sign. That's the area. I'm not clear up to what point we have it in fee and up to what point we have an easement only.
Yeah, and that's that's on that map. Okay, and then. Uh signage. Signage uh as Craig aptly stated. About Escher and keep out and blah blah.
Yeah, I here it is. If Patrick, if you're transcribing here, environmentally sensitive habitat. No access. Use pedestrian access only.
I would add to that. The. I don't know if you're ready to have to do this, but the language may be changed by. By consulting with the Sheriff's Department on enforceability.
Good.
Good enough for you, Pat?
Sure is, yep.
Okay, uh now. The last one would be this question about whether the. Pathway can be closed by MRCA or some other agency. So I would say an agreement. Will be made by. Responsible agency to regulate. The use of the pathway. In evening hours. That. Is that tight enough?
Regulate isn't a good word there. You need something more specific. Restrict.
Restrict. Does that sound good? Is that clear enough for the planning department?
Think so, unless unless Richard has a comment.
Only comment I have is you say evening hours, but would you like to say sunset to sunrise? Pat, do you think?
Is that what we normally say on these accesses that the MRCA does? Sunset sunrise?
I mean, typically, that's how I've seen it done. They do it at the front end and the back end in terms of, you know, at night and then early in the morning.
Well, specifically, you'd want to match it up with Dan Blocker, so if it is the same enforcement, they they could do it at the same time.
And and Dan Blocker appears to be County of LA for I was looking up.
It is County of LA. It's every artist costs you paid for.
Yes, and so their LA, if this gets picked up by MRCA, we typically say. Sunset to sunrise. I know that. They're not a fan of that up in the coastal office up in Ventura, but that's what we say.
And we've we've done it before. So that's what we use, sunset to sunrise. Anybody else have any other? Amendments?
Please don't feed the fish.
What?
Please don't feed the fish.
Uh you know, probably true. You don't want to sit out there and keep them from going upstream, throwing bread at them. Okay, uh do I have a second?
Pat, do you need to read any of that back or do you feel confident with it?
Yeah, I've I've taken it it all down. I mean, I'm I'm pretty confident. If you want me to, I I can reread it and but, you know. I have it all in my notes here. We have the meeting recorded, but it's it's up to the pleasure of the commission or or yourself, Director Malika.
I'm fine and I'll second.
Yeah, the only one I'd like to have you read back is the one on the uh. The walkway. Well, no, the walkway only entered from Coast Highway. Only accessible from Coast Highway.
You want me to read? I mean, to me, that that one was kind of the easiest one, but I mean, I can.
Okay, then then fine. As long as it's only accessible and you believe that. Okay, who seconded it?
I I will.
Okay, uh any discussion? Okay, can we have a vote?
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
You're you're.
Commissioner Wetton.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Now, normally we close if we don't open a new item after. Uh ten thirty, but in this case it is only our calendar, so I'm gonna. Open the hearing for seven A, which is our calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve it?
Uh I I will move to approve it.
Also, Commissioner Wetton, it appears that you're talking and you're muted at the moment.
Sorry about that. I'll second the motion.
Okay, I mean, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
You might want to have the record reflect on the previous vote that Mark Wetton held up his thumb as a positive yes. We didn't hear that.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll say we gotta count. I gotta vote by voice.
I'm sorry, I kept I was hearing multiple voices. Who is officially moving it initially?
I did. And Jeff seconded it, right?
Well, I I seconded.
Oh, okay, Mark seconded it.
Everybody seconded it. Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Like the Marx Brothers, yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries. You are adjourned.
Aloha.
Goodbye, everybody.
Good tomorrow.